Councilmember Doran, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will be our last meeting before we conclude our election season. We don't have a pastor to pray for us, but I thought it'd be appropriate to take a moment of silence and reflect on our democracy, on our nation, on our community, and our role that we all play in making this a more perfect union, a moment of silence. Thank you, clerk. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with an unorganized meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the Journal?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's offices are listed in the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Madam Clerk, are there any other announcements to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with President Protem?
Thank you so much, Council President. I do have a resolution tonight. Tonight I have resolu-- oop, computer almost fell. Tonight I have resolution 0157X-2020 to support an essential workers' bill of rights. Since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic and economic crisis, the lives and livelihoods of workers and families in Columbus have been devastated. Unlike previous economic downturns, however, this one hit low-income workers first and hardest due to the sectors impacted most. Forbes looked at the last 50 years of economic downturns and found that this one was the first in which women were laid off in higher numbers than men. And we know, when you peel back the layers further, that Black women and Latinas have seen disproportionately the highest unemployment rates. At the same time, many low-income workers were needed to keep the city of Columbus and our whole country running. They were designated essential workers and required to continue showing up in person despite lockdown orders that were put in place around the country to protect public health and safety. And I think this really gave lie to the casual term that's too often used to describe low-income work. We call it low-skilled, right? We call it low-skilled labor because of the, you know, college degree and things like that. But when lives were on the line, these workers brought their skills to the table to keep our country running. Even as these essential workers were celebrated for their commitment to the community and their neighbors, they faced, and they continue to face, increased health and safety risks at their workplaces that can result in higher rates of infection, serious illness, and death. And they face fewer choices between whether to do work at home or report to their workplace. The risks posed by COVID-19 often compound longstanding workplace inequities and injustices, including low wages, lack of overtime pay, lack of fair scheduling practices, no paid leave or health benefits, and often active efforts to limit workers' rights to collectively bargain, excuse me. Due to the sectors in which they are disproportionately employed, Black, Latina, and immigrant women are more likely to be represented among essential workers at the greatest risk with the fewest protections at the same time. It is important to note that this, that many of these workers have been excluded from the benefits of federal coronavirus relief funds and the existing safety net, causing tremendous economic stress for individuals and families as they struggle throughout this pandemic. As many of you know, in recognition of the unprecedented challenges faced by workers in Columbus, this council funded a Right to Recover program earlier this month to provide wage replacement for low-income workers in order to be able to recover following a positive COVID-19 test. Giving workers financial assistance is, truly helps our entire community in the midst of this crisis. But through this resolution, we are committing to continue our focus on ensuring equity, security, and benefits for all workers. We are also calling on the state of Ohio and the federal government to do the same through the adoption of an essential workers' bill of rights with a focus on enforceable protections for essential workers exposed to additional risks from their work during the COVID-19 pandemic. An essential worker bill of rights should provide for all workers, regardless of legal status, health and safety protections at work, including healthcare security, living wages, job quality standards, including those collectively bargained for by union members, paid sick family and medical leave, protection from retaliation for whistleblowers, proper job classification that ensures no one is unfairly excluded from basic protections, affordable and accessible childcare, respect for the dignity of all work and the expertise of individuals in their fields, accountability for companies that shirk their responsibilities to their workers. These are the basic tenets of an essential workers' bill of rights. And I'm really pleased to introduce someone we are joined by here tonight, Monica Ramirez, a longtime advocate, organizer, and attorney who has focused her career on fighting for equity. She is the founder and president of Justice for Migrant Women, an organization focused on advancing the human and civil rights of migrant women and their families. Monica, thank you for joining us. Thank you so much for joining us virtually here. And I would appreciate it if you could please share more about the challenges that workers, especially Black, Latina, and immigrant women are facing during this pandemic and why securing these basic worker protections across our country is so important. Are you there, Monica?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for the invitation to speak and for your words in support of this important resolution. So as Councilmember Brown stated, my name is Monica Ramirez, and I'm the founder of an organization called Justice for Migrant Women, which is headquartered here in Ohio. I was born, raised, and live in Ohio. I'm the daughter and granddaughter of migrant farmworkers. And as the daughter and granddaughter of migrant farmworkers here in this great state, I understand in a very personal way the costs of not being covered by some of the most basic labor protections that other workers have been afforded. And I also understand what the cost of the lack of protections has meant during this COVID crisis for farmworkers and other low-paid workers. We know that the work of farmworkers and other individuals working in many sectors that were employed and continued working throughout the COVID crisis have been and always will be essential. It's just that during this COVID crisis, our government decided to name them essential. And one of the challenges that we face as people who come from these communities like I do and people who serve individuals from these communities like we do understand is that there is a disconnect when you call a group of workers essential, but you fail to extend essential rights and benefits to those same workers as we've seen time and again with farmworkers and many others who've been employed during this crisis. We know that support for essential workers like farmworkers remains even more important than ever before. That's why we, along with other organizations across this state and across this country, have helped to launch the Essential Worker Campaign and, in particular, the Essential Ohio Campaign. Farmworkers, along with many other workers such as childcare and elder care workers, construction workers, grocery, food production, service and delivery workers, drivers, and other gig workers, city and county workers, teachers, and many others are not guaranteed, as Councilmember Brown stated, things such as premium pay, access to quality, culturally competent healthcare, or paid sick and family leave. This was already a problem prior to the COVID crisis, and it has now been exacerbated by the crisis that we've all been living through. You know, to give you a sense of how this is impacting Latina workers specifically, many of whom we serve through our work, a New York Times article came out earlier this month and stated that 324,000 Latina workers, more Latina workers than any other category of workers, exited the labor force in August and September. That's an incredible number of individuals who've been forced out of the workplace. And many of them have been forced to leave the workforce because they didn't feel that they had what they needed to be able to continue working. They haven't been afforded the protections that have been needed. And so it's with this reality that we think about how do we best support workers like these during this time? And we also have to think about what it looks like to return back to normal, quote-unquote "normal," after this crisis is over. And the reality is that we don't want things to return to the way that they were before this COVID crisis because having entire groups of workers like farmworkers and care workers, domestic workers, and others denied rights has never been normal. For context, and for those of you who might be less familiar with the farmworker community that I come from, there are about 33,000 farmworkers who work in our state in the agricultural sector. Many of these farmworkers are not migratory. That means that they live in our state year-round, and they do seasonal work. And we all benefit from that work as people who eat and as consumers. And so they, like food production workers and grocery workers and so many others, need to be supported now through resolutions like this one. The National Essential Workers Campaign is working across sectors across the country to not only demand that all individuals who've now been deemed as essential have rights during this pandemic, but that post-COVID-19, the economy and society is one that values all workers and that rights that they have are reflective of that. Justice for Migrant Women and our partners, ABLE, Ohio Immigrant Alliance, Cleveland Jobs with Justice, Workers United Chicago, and Midwest Regional Joint Board, Local 10, La Conexión, Policy Matters, and more, are proud to be leading the Essential Ohio Campaign, fighting for the rights of our workers that are named essential but not treated as such. Toledo, Lakewood, and Cleveland have now passed similar essential worker resolutions that support the Essential Worker Bill of Rights, elevating issues from health and safety protections at work to affordable childcare for every working family. There are important steps that we have to consider as we hold accountable the people, communities, policymakers, and institutions that depend on and benefit from the labor of these essential workers. Essential must not be synonymous with disposable. So what can Columbus do? Columbus can pass the resolution supporting essential workers in the Essential Worker Bill of Rights, providing a foundation for change at the local, state, and federal level. There are steps that can be taken now by the city to build off of this foundation. Columbus and other cities should review how each of the enumerated protections in this resolution would apply to municipal employees, many of whom would be classified as essential workers, at least to understand the current treatment and state of play and lay the groundwork for changes that are needed. Columbus can amplify city enforcement of protections that exist or could exist. You can ensure employer neutrality at the city level to ensure that city supports unions' attempts to organize workers. There also is a need to implement labor standards in the city's procurement policy and to consider the formation of task forces that would support these workers. I ask for your support on this Essential Workers' Bill of Rights resolution in Columbus. We must do better for the people that are part of our community, that are keeping our economy and our society operational. We cannot survive without them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ramirez. I also want to thank you for your career of fighting for farmworker families and for the movement to support essential workers now. I could not underscore more the line you said, that essential cannot be, essential workers cannot be synonymous with disposable workers. We need to seek a new normal when this crisis is over, not a normal that we had going into it. So thank you for being a part of the movement and your fight for equity. Are there any questions or comments from my councilmembers, my colleagues? So many of you have done, I'm thinking about the wage theft ordinance that Councilmember Doran passed last month. So many of you are working on equity policies that really speak to the spirit of the resolution. Councilmember Favor with housing and Councilmember Tyson with human services, and I could list everyone. But the floor is open for comments, or I'm also happy to move for passage. But remember, you have to be verbal for me to know you have a comment because I can't see everyone. All right. Well, thank you again, Ms. Ramirez, for joining us tonight virtually. And I move for adoption on resolution 0157X-2020.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Thank you, President Protem, and thank you to Ms. Ramirez as well.
Thank you. That's all I have in resolutions, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I have, do have one resolution this evening. I have a resolution 0158X-2020 to recognize Bi-Veteran Shoppers Week and express our appreciation for those who have served the United States Armed Forces. 700 veteran-owned businesses in Ohio. These small businesses.
Councilmember Brown, you're muted again. I don't know how that happened. I'm sorry. It is muted again. Ms. Angeles?
Are you touching me? Are we clear now?
Yeah, now you're unmuted. Now you're muted again.
Councilmember Brown, you're unmuted. Go ahead to speak.
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome, sir.
Whereas there are pro--
Councilmember, I think there's a connectivity issue.
Pass. I also have in the audience this evening Regina Rembert, who is the president of Bi-Vets. Can we patch into her?
Yes, I'm here, Councilmember Brown. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. As my colleagues, I hope, can hear you as well. They're shaking. They're nodding their head. Yes. Ms. Rembert, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Brown, and for the entire Columbus City Council, for your time this evening and your consideration of a resolution to support Bi-Vet. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about Bi-Vet and what it is. Bi-Vet is a new nonprofit, and actually, it's not only an initiative in Ohio, but it's a national initiative, and it's designed to encourage and support veteran entrepreneurship within our communities. And by that, our goal is to accomplish this in three ways. First of all, we're attempting to create a comprehensive veteran list where you can easily locate and identify veteran-owned businesses. Just from some of the research that I've been able to do, there are many, many lists, and they're all scattered. But we need one comprehensive list where if you do want to support, and I hope that you do, a veteran business, you can easily find them. And so that's one of the things that we're working on creating under the Bi-Vet umbrella. Another thing that we're working on is to create a VetNet, which is actually finding the veteran-owned businesses and bringing them all together for support and collaboration because veterans understand other veterans. And so in doing that, we can help the smaller veteran-owned businesses build their networks, build their businesses. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Which in the end will really strengthen their communities where they work and live. It will strengthen the Ohio economy, and it will also impact our federal economy. And today, in the environment of COVID, it's more important than ever. And that's not to take away any business from our other small businesses because they're all equally important. But as we approach Veterans Day, I'd like a way to recognize the veterans for the sacrifices and also their families' sacrifice for our country. I am also a veteran. I served 22 years in the Army and the Army Reserve and actually have a military spouse and children that grew up in the military environment. So it's very important to me to give back to the other veterans in our community. I also operate a small business. It's an HR consulting business. And so just in doing a little bit of research, there's about 2.5 million veteran-owned businesses across the United States. And of course, there are some larger ones like Walmart and RE/MAX and Nike Shoes and some of the larger ones. But the majority of us are very small, very underfunded, and we really could use the support. And there's no better way to grow our small businesses than to come together. In the military, you learn teamwork, you learn a free decor, you learn to look out for your brother or your sister, and it doesn't matter, you know, what race, what creed, what color, what religion. None of that matters. We're all brothers and sisters in the military. And so I'm hoping that, you know, Bi-Vet is successful, and it will help to bring all of our veterans together to support one another and not only support one another, but support our communities that we live and work in. So I appreciate your support, Councilmember Brown, and the rest of Columbus City Council. I've also received some support from Youngstown and Toledo and Dayton. And I'm hoping that, you know, the entire state of Ohio will embrace Bi-Vet and really support our veterans and our veteran entrepreneurs in our communities. So thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Ms. Rembert, thank you very much. Being a veteran, I know the issues you already discussed and how important it is that people do work together. So with that, let me say, as, again, as Veterans Day does approach, that this council encourages residents to seek out and support veteran-owned businesses in our community. With that, unless there are any additional questions, I move for adoption.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes. Councilmember Favor?
I wanted to say, extend my appreciation for you bringing this resolution this evening. There's been a lot of strategic efforts to support small businesses throughout the pandemic. But this is one specific graphic that we haven't seen a lot of campaigns around. And, Ms. Member, thank you for your service, number one. And then, number two, where can residents find more information about businesses owned by veterans? You're on mute.
If you go to the Department of Veteran Affairs, there's information there that you can retrieve for veteran-owned businesses. I'm currently in the process of developing an app where you can easily find and locate veteran-owned businesses. That's actually in the works right now as we speak. So that will make it a lot easier. But I've been doing promotions and campaigns and sending out sites where you could look for and search for veteran-owned businesses, but under the Department of Veteran Affairs, there's many of them under their umbrella. So a lot of these sites, it costs money to get on these sites, like through Novoba and different arenas. And I don't really want our veterans to have to pay. And so we've been doing fundraisers to develop this app, and it won't cost them anything. We just need to find out where they are so that they, so that we can include them in this initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. I had mentioned that to Ms. Rembert earlier, and I appreciate you reminding me. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions for my colleagues?
Councilmember Brown, this is Councilmember Tyson. Ms. Rembert, I just want to say thank you for your advocacy for our veterans and certainly thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. If there are no additional questions or comments, I move for adoption.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Ms. Rembert, for your service.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Doran.
Thank you, Council President. No resolutions tonight, but I'd be remiss since this is our last council meeting before the election. Just want to remind folks that are watching, they can still request an absentee ballot. If they need that information, they can go to columbus.gov/vote. There's still time, but that time is winding down pretty quick. So if folks want to request a ballot and vote from the comfort of their home, please get that request in as soon as possible. You can mail that ballot back or drop it off yourself at the Franklin County Board of Elections at 1700 Morris Road. Also, if people are interested in voting early in person, the Board of Elections has done a great job ensuring a safe and secure procedure for those that want to cast an early in-person ballot. I know you, Council President Harden, did this over the weekend, and a lot of folks are choosing this option. So I want to remind people that they want to vote early in person at the Board of Elections. Again, it's located at 1700 Morris Road. They can do so tomorrow, actually through this Friday, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Folks are also able to vote early this weekend at the Board of Elections. The hours this Saturday are 8:00 to 4:00, and then 1:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, and then 8:00 to 2:00 on Monday, and then obviously, it will be in-person voting on the 3rd. So I just wanted to remind folks the different options that they have to make sure that their voice is heard this election season. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have.
Thank you for that important reminder, and again, appreciate the work of you and Aaron Gibson and other folks in our Vote Safe Columbus efforts. Thank you. Councilmember Favor?
Thank you, Council President Harden. I don't have any resolutions tonight, but I would like to take this opportunity to address a concern I've been hearing about from our residents across the community, and that is the issue of speeding. The past several months, we have witnessed an increase in speeding and reckless driving behavior in Columbus, and this is just absolutely unacceptable. and reckless driving behavior in Columbus, and this is just absolutely unacceptable. We have to be more mindful of our driving behavior and remember that we share our streets with pedestrians, bicyclists, and scooters. I know that some neighborhoods have been having conversations and advocating for increased speeding enforcement, but I also know that we all have a part to play in ensuring safety and decreasing traffic incidents on our streets. I'd like to ask Director Gallagher to make some comments on the city's Vision Zero efforts, as well as other measures the Department of Public Service and Transportation is taking to address the issue. I also want to take the opportunity to allow public safety to weigh in as well, because, obviously, we need their continued support in this effort. So with that, Director Gallagher?
Good evening, Councilmember Faver, Council President Harden, and other members of council. We know that speed is the number-one predictor of crash severity and deaths. Speed has become a great concern throughout Ohio during the coronavirus pandemic. The Ohio State Highway Patrol has issued more than 2,200 tickets since April for driving over 100 miles per hour. Just think about that. 2,200 tickets, that's the people they have caught for going over 100 miles per hour. That's a 61% increase over the same time period since 2019. A new city initiative, Vision Zero Columbus, is focusing on ending fatalities and serious crashes by slowing down these vehicles and making our city roadways safe and comfortable for all road users, like you said, whether driving, walking, biking, or using transit. The Department of Public Service and our partners are developing our initial Vision Zero action plan now to ultimately eliminate these crashes and serious injuries on our city roadways. In Columbus, 60% of our fatal and serious injury crashes occur on only 10% of our city streets. These streets are our high-injury network, and they tend to be our multi-lane roadways with heavier traffic. The Vision Zero Action Plan will identify strategies to address speed and other issues that we are seeing on our high-injury network roadways. Education and enforcement are strategies we can apply now to reduce speed and crashes and increase safety. We continue to work to educate residents and others while we practice safe behaviors to protect all of our roadway users. The Vision Zero Action Plan will begin to address speed and safety issues while we continue to gather data and community input. We encourage residents to pinpoint unsafe traffic locations by using the map at columbus.gov/visionzero to take the short survey there. I will say that we are also finishing up our action plan strategy items over the next couple of months, and then we hope to bring that, Councilmember Faver, to you and the other members of councils in early 2021 to approve our action items, and then hopefully, put that into action in 2021.
Thank you, Director Gallagher. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues to Director Gallagher as it relates to this issue in particular? If not, I'll turn the floor over to Director Pettis. Director?
Thank you, Council President Harden, Councilmember Faver, members of council. It has been brought to public safety's attention, and we have had representatives in attendance with Councilmember Brown at community meetings, and at one of those community meetings, Commander Terry Moore of the Traffic Bureau and Rock Ally of Zone 2 Commander attended with Councilmember Brown. On October 15th, Commander Ally began having patrol officers in nine precincts to begin traffic enforcement on Livingston Avenue, Dover Road, and Burwood Boulevard. He also asked the Community Response Team, or CRT, to get involved when time permits. CRT officers usually do not take dispatch calls. They are assigned to patrol. Commander Moore has assigned the Motorcycle Unit, which usually conducts freeway enforcement, to monitor and enforce traffic along the Livingston Avenue corridor. There have been numerous citations issued for speeds up to 60 miles per hour on a 35 mile-per-hour residential street. That's one example of one neighborhood, one corridor, with a serious speed enforcement problem. In addition to the Livingston Avenue efforts, Chief Quinlan reported to me today that CPD, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and the Ohio State Highway Patrol are coordinating efforts to resume normal enforcement, indicating that speeding was up as enforcement was down due to COVID-19. So we believe this collaborative effort with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office and the Ohio State Highway Patrol will help us to step up and bring enforcement levels back to normal. And where needed, we can deploy additional resources as we are doing with the Livingston Avenue corridor. Chief Quinlan indicates the Columbus Division of Police responds to 100% of 311 calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, and that's really great information to hear, that latest update from Chief Quinlan in regards to normal enforcement going back to where we were before COVID hit Columbus. So thank you for that information. And then last, Council President Harden, just want to make an additional announcement that tomorrow at 5:00 PM, I will be holding a virtual hearing of the Housing Committee to discuss the Housing for All legislative package that will look at the source of income discrimination, renters' choice, and rental receipt legislation. The hearing will be livestreamed on CTV, the city's YouTube channel, and Facebook. If you are interested in providing testimony or would like additional information about the legislation itself, please email my legislative aide, Tysha Harden, at TYHARDEN@columbus.gov. Thank you, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Faver. Councilmember Remy?
Thank you so much, Council President Harden. I don't have anything, just to echo Councilmember Dorans and our colleagues about voting. If you haven't made a voting plan, we ask that you make that voting plan. And Councilmember Dorans laid out how you can early vote, but certainly, the polls will be open on Tuesday, November 3rd. We ask that you make your voting plan, share that voting plan, use the hashtag VoteSafeCBus, and we hope we see a historic number of people outvoting at this very important election. Thanks so much, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson?
Good evening. I have a resolution. I have a couple of announcements. My resolution is Zero 160X Test 2020, and Erin Hathaway, who's executive director and founder of Erin Pink, is on the phone. And this resolution is to recognize National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Columbus, and to thank Erin Pink Limited for their commitment to empowering others to be a voice against bullying. Whereas bullying is comprised of direct behaviors such as teasing, taunting, threatening, hitting, and stealing that are initiated by one or more individuals against a target, as well as indirect behaviors such as spreading rumors and acting in ways that cause people to be socially isolated through intentional exclusion. With all such behaviors, direct or indirect, amounting to physical, emotional, or psychological intimidation occurring repeatedly over time to create an ongoing pattern of harassment and abuse. And whereas people who stand by passively, watching, or actively encouraging bullying, also known as bystanders, are also affected by these hostile acts. They encourage bullying by creating an audience. They may become desensitized to cruelty. They may learn to imitate the bullying behavior and become bullies themselves, and/or they may be fearful for their own safety, adding to their own insecurity. Whereas bullying in schools and the workplace is a pervasive problem that can have negative consequences for the climate and for the right to learn and to work in a safe environment without fear, and one that can have a negative lifelong consequences, both for those who bully and their targets. Whereas cyberbullying, in some ways, has become the predominant issue facing society. Cyberbullying is interpersonal and includes aggressors, targets, and bystanders. It also involves peer acceptance, recognition, and occasionally, retribution. Cyberbullying generally contains perceptual distortions. However, children who are involved with cyberbullying, other children often do so with misplaced belief that they are joking. Whereas Columbus City Council and the city of Columbus supports policies and programs that address the prevention, intervention, and elimination of bullying. The city established the Commission on Black Girls in July of 2018 to study and assess the quality of life of black girls in Columbus and central Ohio. The CLBG report issued in July of 2020 found that 45.9% of black girls in Columbus indicated that they had been bullied at school. 20% reported being bullied directly on social media. 22% reported being bullied because of their skin color, and 9% being harassed because of their skin tone. Whereas the Commission on Black Girls also provides resources and identifies organizations that address bullying, self-harming behaviors, suicide, maltreatment, and prevention services. And to that end, council is recognizing the work of Erin Pink Limited, which has been serving girls and teens in Columbus since 2011 through its school programs, community workshops, events, and speaking engagements, teaching girls to live on purpose. Their Lunchbox Girl Talk School Program challenges the narrative of what it means to be a girl in today's society, inspiring girls to set standards and expectations that align with their values and morals, encouraging confidence so that they can confront stereotypes and peer pressure and be empowered to find their use of their voices. Whereas the Erin Pink Lunchbox Girl Talk School Program is an interactive program which helps students to learn about the different types of bullying, to identify the importance of treating people fairly, and determine how and when they should intervene or prevent bullying. Through their reflection, they learn how to become leaders and prevent situations that appear to be bullying from taking place. Whereas this council will continue to work with the appropriate agencies and organizations in a national effort to inform the general public about the risks and costs of bullying for both the bully and the target, as well as those who witness bullying and bring about a change in societal attitudes towards bullying, now therefore being resolved by this council of the city of Columbus. So this council has hereby recognized National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Columbus, and thank Erin Pink Limited for their commitment to empowering others to be a voice against bullying. And now I would turn the floor over to Erin Hathaway, who is the founder of Erin Pink. Erin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Councilmember President Harden, members of council, and Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for bringing the issue of bullying to surface. It is relevant and necessary to acknowledge these traumatic experiences that can have negative lasting effects on a person's development, the way they interact with others, and how they perform in school or the workplace. I am Erin Hathaway, and I am here today with my husband, Sharone Hathaway, who I work alongside of to serve youth in central Ohio. We consider this to be purpose work for us. More importantly, this is God's work for us. This week during, or this past week during our virtual school program at one of our schools, we discussed bullying, its effects, and a lot of platform for our high school students to share their experiences. In conclusion, and after, you know, our teen talk, our students recognize that having high self-esteem would alter their bullying experiences, whether they were involved or witnessed. So empowering girls to have high self-esteem, or students in general, to have high self-esteem is a core component of bullying prevention. The structure of our programs creates an environment so girls may come together in a supportive, non-competitive space to develop leadership skills and build high self-esteem. In result, they are more conscious of others. They are aware of the impression they are leaving on others. They are aware of personal boundaries. They build standards. They become empowered to speak up and more likely to advocate for themselves in others' scenarios where bullying may occur. Erin Pink, I don't know if you guys can see my iPad here. Erin Pink is a 13-year-old fictional African-American character that we created. She resides in Columbus, who illustrates what it means to be a young, empowered leader. Her teen, real-life, and relatable experiences underscore the needs our organization addresses. So based on her story, Erin Pink is an empowerment and mentoring organization for girls and teens, and in collaboration with my husband, we serve under the umbrella of ICE mentors. Our programs seek to introduce girls to positive, young, professional women. It provides resources and mentorship to empower girls to become leaders and to speak up now and in the future to create a more ethical reality where they are comfortable advocating for themselves, their families, and their communities. Also, to create a safe space where girls can interact with mentors and peers that they can relate to, and more importantly, ones that look like them, because positive representation matters. In a survey completed in 2019 by our students, girls shared that they were perceived to be loud, mean, bossy, and too-black. These stereotypes mirror the way that society often sees black women as loud, mean, bossy, and too-black girls. They grow into neck-rolling, finger-snapping black women, perceived to be as aggressive, angry, and promiscuous, or how I would see it now as an angry bully. The consequence of these stereotypes are real, shaping the educational, professional, and social experiences of our black girls and resulting in challenges that follow them throughout their lives. Black girls are taught to constrain their behaviors, hold their tongues, and be quiet, passive followers so that they do not offend others. This silencing, along with many other issues, impacts their high self-esteem. Our programs, including the Erin Pink Lunchbox Girl Talk School Program, Give That Girl The Mic, our all-girl talent showcase, and our She's Gold Community Leadership Program aims to shift and change that behavior and mindset. We do this through our Character Development Curriculum, which is a prevention tool, mentorship, our leadership opportunities, and our non-competitive performance to empower girls innovatively while creating a culture where girls are celebrated. It is a fact and is true that empowered girls, empowered students with high self-esteem can prevent bullying, and I will say that it also has an impact on adults. And so I know for my own testament that, you know, a lot of our students are watching adults and their behaviors and our leaders in the community. And so I would challenge, you know, as adults and as parents, as community leaders, that we also look at how we are interacting with each other and what we are leaving, what impact we are leaving and showing our youth today. So thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I know that with your support and the work that you're doing with the Commission on Black Girls, this work will continue to impact our students and our girls in our city.
Thank you so much, Erin. I don't know if there's any other comments from my colleagues, but I just appreciate the work that you're doing, and it is so important that we do everything we possibly can to prevent our young people from bullying each other, because young people that are bullied become adults who bully, and that is not appropriate behavior. So thank you, Erin, and if there are no other comments or questions from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Second?
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you so much. I also just want to, again, share that Columbus Public Health is providing free flu shots, and again, we'll have them this Saturday, October 31st, at 240 Parsons Avenue, at the Loop, from 9:00 to 3:00. And also, beginning today, that the Ohio Expo, at the Ohio Expo Center and State Fair Celeste Center, at 717 East 17th Avenue, there'll be free flu shots, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to, I'm sorry, 8:00 to 4:00 PM. And again, I had the experience of going and getting my flu shot at the Columbus Public Health on Saturday. It was really easy to go and get that shot, and 145 other individuals also came to Columbus Public Health on Saturday. And then lastly, I just want to make sure that during this period through COVID, there are a lot of people having some, it's very difficult for people, and certainly, their mental health. And I just want to share two or- And I just want to share two organizations that you could, people could reach out to. If you're having any concerns with either substance abuse or a mental health crisis, please contact the crisis line at Netcare, six one four two seven six twenty-two seventy-six. And then the other is NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. NAMI's hotline at one eight hundred two seven three eight two five five. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and really your last comments and actually your resolution dovetail really well into the resolution that I'm, I'm going to bring forward this evening. I have resolution zero one six one X dash twenty twenty, and it's to recognize the connection between increased social media use and the potential detrimental effects on our, on our mental health. A quick, quick story, it was just a month ago, as like many, I was watching the expected return either of indictments or non-indictments in the Breonna Taylor case. I woke up that morning heavy with just the fear, the disgust, the sorrow of where we are as a country, the unkept promises that we have as a country, and how I thought or how I expected that case to proceed forward. I then got on my social media and got into that. And folks who use social media often, I got into that spiral where I continued to compound that, that same, that, that same feeling by seeing hundreds and hundreds of my other friends and other folks who felt the same way that I did, which after I got off my social media, realized I felt that much worse. So I, since that day, I've got off social media. I'm no longer on, on social media. And it has, for me personally, been good for my mental health and my ability to digest a lot of information this year in 2020. It's been a tough year. And I'm digesting that information via either traditional media, online, or in connection with other people. And we all know that social media has a role to play in our lives, but I wanted to put this resolution forward to recognize that our current increased usage can be dangerous for our mental health and well-being. Last year, Pew Research estimated that seventy-two percent of the American public use some type of social media. This May polling found that more than half of responders reported increased usage on social media platforms during the COVID-19 pandemic. Studies suggest that excessive social media use during the pandemic is a predictor of symptoms of depression. I had a big table conversation on this topic two weeks ago, and one of the critical voices at the conversation was Dr. Ken Yeager, who was Director of the Stress, Trauma, and Resilience Program at Ohio State Medical, Webster Medical Center. He is with us this evening, and I'm going to invite Dr. Yeager to, Yeager to just give us some oversight, what he's seeing. He had studied this space when we reached out to him from our Legislative Research Office. And I think he can speak to us about the issue and what he thinks that, thinks that we can do as a community to connect in healthy ways. Dr. Yeager.
Thank you, Council President Harden and all of council members for taking the time. We recently conducted a study at the Ohio State University examining two thousand participants and their use of social media. This is an unprecedented time with systemic racism, social injustice, political seasons, overwhelming amounts of data coming in to see us. And we are aware that the individuals in the United States are suffering, and we are having a mental health crisis. And it goes to what Councilmember Tyson was discussing with the bullying online. And what we found in our study is that two-thirds of Americans surveyed had changed their social media, media experience. And this has been driven by the negativity that they have found online. So a third, as President Harden suggested, are taking a break from social media, are moving to different sites because of the negative impact this is having on them. And it is very important to understand that these are individuals that are not visiting sites that would normally lead them to negative perceptions. They are interacting with peers who, by virtue of being online, are losing filters, and they are saying things that the individual had never imagined would come from them. We had several examples of this as we were moving through the study. The other third is talking something about what President Harden had mentioned, which is this, this doom-scrolling phenomenon. So this is going to be the buzzword of 2020. Doom-scrolling is when you get into a social media site and you're looking at others' responses, and that response amplifies your response to the negative situation. It's the modern-day equivalent of not being able to look away from a train wreck. We know it's coming. We sense it's there, but yet we can't pull ourselves away from this. Many of the doom-scrollers indicate a negative impact on their mental health. During the same time as our survey, the Centers for Disease Control with the Census Bureau conducted what was the Pulse Survey. That was this summer, and they baseline against data from 2013 and 2014, examining individuals experienced with anxiety and depression. In 2013 and 2014, the national average of anxiety and depression ranged between twelve percent to seventeen percent. This study being replicated in the early portion of the summer returned depression, anxiety, or both depression and anxiety combined at rates of thirty-two to forty-three percent of the population surveyed. So clearly, we are experiencing difficulty in this area, and it is a national epidemic of mental health crisis. And again, to Councilmember Tyson, absolutely Netcare, absolutely NAMI are amazing individuals, and they understand and they are willing to help. The portion of the study that I wanted to bring up and would lean into for city council is that there is a positive side on this. The positive side is social media and other platforms, such as Skype, FaceTime, provide individuals within the community safe ways to connect with other members of their families and understanding that social distancing does not equal social isolation. And this is a message that Columbus City Council can take forward to the community, and they could advocate for us as a smart city utilizing our, our infrastructure to be able to connect those in the, in the Columbus City area, connecting teens with older adults, connecting individuals who are socially isolated by virtue of age or zip code, by putting out publications and public messaging around the positivity of connecting with others. Because the last piece of the study indicated that while many are finding this to be a negative experience, once they step back from it and re-cue the way that they are thinking about the use of social media, they are better able to engage at a level that is happier, but more importantly, healthier, not only for the individual, but the community. And I very much support President Harden's resolution and all of the wonderful work that is being done by Columbus City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager, for, for giving us that overview. And the study that you, you put together in Ohio State was the basis for, again, conversations that we've been having here in Columbus. And as we approach this next week, where as a country, we're going to be in a pressure pot of conversation and sharing, just wanted to make sure the council was raising this conversation just so that folks take care of themselves as we digest all of this information through social media. Are there any comments from any of my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson.
Council President Harden, first of all, I appreciate you having Dr. Yeager here, and certainly this resolution. And the one comment that he made about how we can use, you know, Skype and other forms of communicating with family and keeping people connected, that is so important. I think especially as we get ready to embark upon the holidays. And if people are certainly, you know, continue to practice their, their distancing based upon, you know, COVID-19, that families aren't going to be able to get together like they used to in the past. And so by him and let he was able to share the importance of using, you know, Skype and other forms of communication like we're doing on the WebEx, to be able to stay close to one another so that people aren't socially isolated. So thank you for having him come and speak today, and thank you for your resolution.
Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to jump in. Thank you for offering this resolution. And, you know, I, I think that it is, it's so important to think about those pieces of advice and how we can stay in better contact. But then also to have this conversation out loud because I will tell you, I don't feel that I can connect with people as well over the internet, right? So even when we use things, virtual ways of staying close to people, it's going to be hard regardless because we're in a hard time. And so naming these things out loud, having resolutions like yours and Councilmember Tyson's are really important so that, you know, the, what people are struggling with, residents around the city are struggling with, doesn't feel odd or embarrassing or worthy of shame for them. I'm also thinking a lot about the young people in our lives. I mean, my children are too young to be using social media, but probably all of this, all of us have some young person in our life who's on social media, you know, who's of the age to be using it, and that it is a particularly stressful time for them, lacking that social interaction and youth brain development. I mean, there's a lot of science behind it. They demonstrates those teenage years, young people's brains are not adult brains yet. And so I have found this very helpful, and it's a reminder to me to remember to do that outreach to young people in my life, teenagers in my life who need to hear this message too, you know, who may not have, have access to the research or hear the conversations. So I, I very much appreciate. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no further questions or comments, it is resolved that this council recognizes the connection between increased social media use and the potential detrimental effects on our mental health, and is resolved to look at methods, as Councilmember Tyson spoke about, to increase the mental health of our Columbus community. I move for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Resolution is adopted. Thank you all. Before moving on into the agenda, I'd like to report our current COVID numbers. As of this afternoon, there have been four hundred and eighty-nine COVID deaths in our city. That's more, that's five more since our last council meeting last week. So five more of our residents have lost their lives due to this, this virus. So just a reminder to please continue to wear your masks. Please continue to social distance. With that, I see Judge Barrows with this one, recognize Judge Barrows. How are you, sir?
Very well, thank you, sir.
Love to the council. Are there any comments by our city auditor, our city attorney? Awesome. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution deemed consent? Saying, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation on this evening's agenda?
So moved.
And seconded by Councilmember Remy. Clerk, please go the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee Ordinance 2297 and 2371 dash 2020. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2259, 2311, 2313, 2318, 2343 dash 2020. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2347, 2359, 2369 dash 2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance 2363 dash 2020. Economic Development Committee Resolution 155 X dash 2020, and Ordinance 2349 dash 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker. Oh, I apologize. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance into the record?
Resolution of expression 159 X dash 2020. Finance Committee Ordinance is 2301, 2302, 2332 dash 2020. Recreation Parks Committee Ordinance 2306 and 2309 dash 2020. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance 2180, 2268, 2270, 2271, 2346, and 2348 dash 2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 150 X, 154 X dash 2020, and Ordinance is 2251, 2372, 2377, 2279, 2294, 2340, 2342, 2360, 2383, and 2388 dash 2020. Housing Committee Ordinance is 2350, 2351, 2352, 2353, 2372, and 2433 dash 2020. Economic Development Committee Ordinance 2370 dash 2020. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 1888, 2374, and 2421 dash 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. That is Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. He is here to speak on ordinance 2352 dash 2020. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
Hello, C.D.R. again, once again, my name is Mr. Wilkins. I'm also speaking about the property at nineteen forty-five Woodcrest Road. I believe it was due instead of Ohio by three times zero zero amount of dollars. I've reported on the federal county audit website. This property was purchased in nineteen eighty-seven for forty-seven thousand. And August the sixth, nineteen ninety-nine, fifty-two nine. Then with the third, two thousand seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollars. June twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, September twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, and June the fifth, two thousand eighteen, for zero amount of dollars. Let's do the forfeit instead of closing, zero amount of dollars, zero amount of dollars. Today, it still sits as a vacant land. But when we have property that sit like this in the state of Ohio, they're not having property to be torn down as empty and vacant land for quite a period of time. Or we start looking at some other entities and some other ideas for these land-made properties not to be demolished. Like I said again in the last comments a couple months, weeks ago, let's start looking at some new creativity ideas for these properties to put them in state-of-the-art homes for multiple disability people which were impaired, and here an impaired special need to outfit. We have too many empty houses that sit all around the state of Ohio, but we can look at something different. But I don't want to see a size expansion on this lot. I want to see the same house that's built. You know, we have these aged history homes that's been, that's been sitting right away. Let's try to do something, and let's put money there where it needs to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for, again, for your advocacy. And would ask Director Stevens to follow up with Mr. Wilkins on this specific question. Are there any other questions or comments to come before council on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for a pool of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Remy. Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of twenty-four thirty-three, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
It's not his, it's not your fault, Councilmember Brown. That was a.
You've been unmuted.
Does that count as a yes vote?
For the record, maybe.
For the record, yes.
There you go. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Your favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, consent portion carries with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day encabled emergency legislation. The first reading, the first committee to come for council is the Finance Committee chaired by President Protem. And it's yours.
Thank you, Council President. Um, tonight in finance, we have ordinance twenty-three forty-five dash twenty-twenty to adopt the twenty-twenty-one annual action plan, which implements the second year of the five-year consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG, uh, Home Investment Partnerships, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, uh, HAPWA programs, and to authorize the filing of the annual action plan with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to declare an emergency. The twenty-twenty-one action plan being authorized through this ordinance strategically implements federal grants to make important investments in Columbus neighborhoods. The focus is on expanding housing and economic opportunities for families. We are tabling the ordinance this evening to allow for a thirty-day public comment period for the plan. During this uh comment period, we will hold a virtual public hearing on November seventeenth at three P M. Where each department administering these grants will cover these investments in greater detail. You can view the plan at columbus.gov backslash finance under the Grants Management link, and comments can be submitted by email to This information is all available on the website as well. Are there any questions from my colleague, colleagues? Hearing none, I request to table ordinance twenty-three forty-five dash twenty-twenty until our December seventh council meeting.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled.
That is all I have in finance. May I move to Recreation and Parks?
Please.
We have ordinance twenty fifty-eight dash twenty-twenty to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with D A resource group for the Street Trees CDBG Site Assessment Inventory twenty-twenty Project to authorize the appropriation of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars within the CDBG fund and in accordance with the twenty-twenty annual action plan as approved by council to authorize the expenditure of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the CDBG fund and to declare an emergency. Um, I want to start by quickly pointing out the connection with first ordinance. Uh, uh, funding for this important work is being provided by CDBG funds through the annual plaque action plan for this year. The inventory being funded will collect information on specific tree locations, um, species, size, um, and condition, while identifying viable planting locations for additional street trees in neighborhoods throughout Columbus. This information is critical to the Forestry Division's uh uh work to improve its care of current trees while also increasing the overall number of trees with new plantings. As Columbus continues to grow, we must cha tackle the challenges of not only preserving green space and trees in the midst of ongoing development, but also increasing them wherever possible, especially in our neighborhoods that do not have enough trees already as it is. Trees are a vital part of our green infrastructure and ongoing efforts uh to address climate change. They help make neighborhoods healthier and more beautiful places to live. But they also provide economic benefits by reducing runoff and flooding. Um, they provide shade and wind block that can reduce utility bills for families on a on a year-over-year basis. These clear benefits, as well as the current disparities in our tree canopy canopy, is why Recreation and Parks is currently developing an urban forestry master plan to guide efforts to preserve and increase our tree canopy. Uh, Director Rakowski, can you please provide a brief update on the Urban Forestry Master Plan? What's the current timeline and next steps for its implementation? Really critical work.
Thank you, President Harden, uh, President Protem Brown and other members of council for the opportunity to give you a brief update on a really important project that we've been working on really since October of last year. So we're almost a year in for the project at this point. Uh, this spring, we spent a lot of time engaging the community in regard to the plan. As you know, President Protem Brown, we have two stakeholder groups, uh, large groups that we've been engaging and that have helped to guide us uh through the plan's creation. Uh, we've uh held a series of workshops. We had a public open house where we had over a hundred and thirty-five uh concerned residents showed up. Uh, we had an online comment period from February uh through April of this year where we had another uh three hundred uh plus comments that we received. Done a lot of one-on-one stakeholder interviews. And of course, uh, our staff have been out there doing presentations uh for anyone who is interested, uh, the interested groups out there. It really was two-pronged approach. One kind of analyzed all the data that you were speaking to in regard to tree canopy. The other was an internal look at our forestry division to try to maximize what we're doing there internally. Social equity was a huge component of what we were doing here with the plan. We understand how important trees are and the tree canopy to social equity here in the city of Columbus. It's how we used uh the data to prioritize what census tracts to focus on for some of our initial planting activity. Uh, where we're at right now, we've finished and completed our first draft. Our stakeholder groups have provided their input. We're incorporating those com those comments over the next couple of weeks into the into the plan, uh, that feedback. Uh, then we're going to hold a thirty-day public comment period here over the winter. And our hope is to have uh the the final plan in front of commission and then in front of council for a final vote uh in the first quarter of next year. So implementation will begin in uh two thousand and twenty-one. Though, as you are well aware, we have not waited to begin uh some really key uh studies and key pilots. We did a pilot earlier this summer in South Linden, a similar tree inventory to to what we want to do with the the funds and the ordinance that you just spoke to. Uh, that allowed us to identify trees that needed some work, some pruning, some removal, but also provided uh spots for five hundred street trees to be planted in the neighborhood, which is what we're currently doing right now. Uh, again, a couple more neighborhoods through the funds that you are providing council tonight. Those are all those neighborhoods that fall into that category that need the need the canopy, also have the other economic and social indicators uh that we are using to prioritize all of this. So I hope to be back to you soon uh with the final plan. And again, thank you, President Protem Brown. You were at and introduced one of our our stakeholder meetings. Uh, Councilmember Remy was there as well at our open house and and spoke at our open house. So we appreciate all of the support. And then, of course, a big shout out to Rosalie Hendon, who is our staff person who's head up this effort. Rosalie got married yesterday, so congratulations to her. She would have been here tonight. Uh, but thank you very much, and uh we look forward to working with council.
Great. Thank you so much, Director. Are there any questions for the Director from my colleagues or comments in general? While hearing none, I um appreciate your update, Director, and I know that you will uh keep this council updated, and we will be in close communication as next steps roll out. Uh, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the uh Public Safety Committee. That can be chaired by Councilmember Ms. Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening I have ordinance twenty-three oh seven, twenty-twenty to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement with Zoll Medical Corporation for the purchase of defibrillators and related supplies for the Division of Fire to authorize the expenditure of five hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. Uh, also this evening I have Dr. Director Pettis, if he has any comments. And we are fortunate to have Dr. Lowe, the medical director for the Division of Fire, present. Uh, Director Pettis?
Thank you, Council President Harden, Councilmember Brown and members of council. Uh, this ordinance authorizes purchase orders in a total amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars for Zoll Medical Corporation defibrillators and related consumable supplies from existing universal term contracts for the Division of Fire. The Fire Division needs to purchase these medical devices and supplies for use in daily emergency services and emergency medical service operations. The existing universal term contract was established by the Purchasing Office for such purposes with Zoll Medical Corporation. This legislation authorizes the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement with Zoll Medical Corporation for the purchase of these supplies for the Division of Fire. This ordinance would authorize the purchase of additional defibr- defibrillators to be equipped on more emergency response apparatus, specifically to improve response protocols during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Additional defibrillators and monitors assigned to response apparatus will reduce the number of apparatus on the emergency scene, and thus the amount of time personnel are in close proximity with patients. An increased number of apparatus equipped with these defibrillators will also reduce the number of response personnel in contact with the patient and eliminate extraneous apparatus on the scene of emergency responses. Vital pre-hospital care would be maintained by emergency response personnel while further mitigating the threat of exposure over and above current protocols in use during the current pandemic. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Lowe, could you explain why these uh defibrillators are a little bit different from the ones we currently have?
Yes, and and thank you for having me, Councilmember Brown, uh, Council President Harden. Um, what this does is kind of expand a capability. Specifically, we're looking at placing these on our engine uh vehicles. Uh, this is a a bit of an upgrade. Um, it mirrors the apparatus that are on ambulances. Uh, as previously noted by uh Dr. Pettis, it allows us to have uh less apparatus, less people potentially in close contact with positive patients. It also uh helps us develop some contingency plans uh should our our system become overwhelmed, uh, should our second wave become to the point that we need to uh establish uh alternate care where we can uh have folks uh use some of the automated features, take advantage of some of the upload capabilities uh for potential telemedicine, um, even potentially leverage uh an ability to do uh what we would consider a uh treatment device or a uh discharge uh from EMS. So overall, just an expanded capability to allow our already trained crews to uh leverage their knowledge and their skills uh in some potentially unique ways.
Uh, Dr. Lowe, one additional question for me. Would you elaborate when you say telemedicine feed, what that means?
So these uh devices do have the ability to um upload uh to the cloud uh and thus transmit to um receiving stations. Uh, typically, we use that currently for transmitting EKGs to hospital emergency rooms. Uh, should contingency planning take us far enough, um, that would allow itself, if we were able to develop a telemedicine, where we could transmit that uh that twelve lead and some of that other uh information to whatever receiving station uh for additional medical insight, uh, medical consultation.
So I take it this is the absolute state of the art with regards to taking care of patients outside the hospital who are expressing cardiac experiences, correct?
Absolutely.
Uh, if there are no questions from my colleagues, I have moved for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Dr. Lowe. Thank you, Director Pettis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, uh, I'm gonna uh ask for a motion to uh to recess uh and then take a five-minute and then take a five-minute break. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. So we will uh come back, it's like six thirty-five for for zoning. I think somebody's having a technical issue, so we want to give time for that to work out.
Meeting number 43 will now come to order. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Most, and second by Tyson. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All councilmembers, sir, morning. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pretending to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the C Attorney's Office, anyone who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. We do so prior to beginning the reading of each variance on the agenda. The first ordinance is 2127, 2020 to rezone 6067 East Main Street, being 19.75 acres located on the south side of East Main Street, 350 feet east of McNaughton Road from CPD, Commercial Plan Development District, to CPD, Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Mumu Carwash, at care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is the addition of a car wash to existing commercial development. The C Department's recommendation is disapproval, but the Far East Air Commission's recommendation is approval. And if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to amend to emergency.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2328-2020 to rezone 1328 Harrisburg Pike, being 0.5 acres located at the far southeast corner of Harrisburg Pike and Little Avenue from the Aruola District to the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Thompson Thrift Development Incorporated, care of Dave Perry. Proposed use is a commercial development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Southwest Air Commission's recommendation is approval seven to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move to amend to emergency.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will. I have ordinance number 2329-2020 to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections 33, 12.09 aisle, 33, 12.11 drive-up stacking area, 33, 12.13 driveway, 33, 12.27 parking setback line, 33, 56.11. A C4 district setback lines of the Columbus C codes were properly located at 1328 Harrisburg Pike to permit reduced development standards for commercial development in the CR, the CR, the C4 Commercial District. The applicant is Thompson Thrift Development Incorporated, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a commercial development. The C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Southwest Air Commission's recommendation is approval seven to zero. Again, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to amend to emergency.
Second. Please call the row. Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That concludes the zoning agenda this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further, comes before council, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
So, second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. Is it all right, Councilmember? Let's roll right back into. All right. May I have a motion to reconvene, meeting number 40?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the row.
Meeting number 40 is reconvened. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember, floor is yours. Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in the Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance number 2304-2020 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with Cosine Industrial, Inc., for the DRWP Basin Clarifier Rehabilitation Project in an amount of up to $19,529,350 to encumber $2,000 for prevailing wage services from the Department of Public Service to authorize the appropriation transfer of $19,521,350 in the Water Sewer Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to authorize the appropriation of expenditure of $19,521,350 within the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $2,000 within the Water General Obligation Votabond Fund for the Division of Water to authorize an amendment to the 2019 capital improvement budget and to declare an emergency. This project will improve the clarified basins and flocculators in the flock tanks in the Dublin Road water plants. The clarifiers and flock equipment are integral parts of the water treatment process, and replacing these aging components will increase reliability and safely maintain the city's water supply. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments or want me to say flocculator again? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President, for that very exciting piece of legislation. That's all I have tonight.
But I appreciated your joke. It really just made me laugh, so.
Thank you.
The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 2258-2020 to authorize the Chief Innovation Officer to provide incentives to program participants relative to the Smart City Challenge Multimodal Trip Planning Application Project, to authorize a waiver of the formal competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, for the purchase of the incentives, to authorize the Chief Innovation Officer to enter into contract with Tangle Card Incorporated for the purchase and distribution of incentives to program participants, to authorize an expenditure of up to $60,000 from the Smart City Grant Fund, for the purchase of the incentives to authorize the expenditure of up to $50 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for the purchase of incentives and the cost of fees associated with the distribution of the incentives and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Chief Innovation Officer to contract for the purchase and distribution of gift cards from Tangle Card Incorporated, and for the gift cards to be used to incentivize participants to use the Smart City Challenge Multimodal Trip Planning Application. The multimodal trip planning application called Pivot will allow Columbus residents to more easily access different travel options based on personal preference, price, or convenience. The pivot, excuse me, application suggests routes based on preferences such as schedule, budget, and preferred travel options. To encourage people to use the Pivot app, incentives will be offered. Smart Columbus is looking to engage 2,400 participants who will receive $25 gift cards compensation totaling $25 per participant. Director Stevens, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding in this ordinance?
Yes, thank you, President Harden, Chair Favor, members of council. Originally, the incentives were part of our common payment system contract that we had in place, but we had to delink that and really focus on our multimodal trip planning application. And the program starts, this grant project launches at the beginning of November, so out of time constraints, we did an informal bid process and moved forward with this request tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions by my colleagues for Director Stevens or myself? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. May we move on to housing?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in housing, we have ordinance 2367-2020 to authorize the Director of Development to modify a contract with Metropolitan Community Services Incorporated, doing business as MSC Touch Agency, in order to amend the scope of services of the contract to allow payment of an administrative fee starting the effective date of the contract and to declare an emergency. MSC Touch Agency provides lawn care and miscellaneous maintenance services to maintain and improve the laps within the city's land bank. I invited Lena Slavsky with MSC Touch Agency to talk a little bit more about the company and the employees who do the great work of this organization. Lena, the floor is yours. Do we have Lena on?
Can you hear and see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for having me on here to speak. I also want to say thank you for passing this legislation, of course, and also to Reza, Marty, Frank, and Audrey at the Land Bank. It's been great to work with them for these last few years. I think we've been working with them since 2014, so we appreciate that opportunity, and they've been great. I'll tell you a little bit about what we do outside of working with the land bank and the housing, and then I'll talk a little bit about the housing that we do. So, we're MCS Touch. We have been working with the central Ohio community for 13 years now. We work with those who are 18 and over returning to our communities from incarceration, from federal and state prisons, as well as local jails. So, our goal is to be a one-stop for those who need any help and to build partnerships in the community to provide services that we are not able to provide in-house. So, we're very big on building partnerships and not just providing referrals. We are unique in that we have decision-making staff at the leadership levels of the agency who are peers and have prior incarceration experience, so that kind of brings a unique perspective, and our participants really appreciate that, and they really make a connection with the agency because of that right away. So, we do provide services in five state prisons to anyone coming back to Franklin County within six to 12 months. We sometimes pick participants up from the institution and bring them straight to our office. Of course, that's been a little amended since COVID. We're not able to do that quite as much, but we do still, we were able to keep our connection in some way with our participants even through COVID at the five institutions, so we've been very fortunate with that. We have great liaisons at our institutions. So, we're able to provide immediate services, things like food and clothing and IDs, and helping navigate the JFS system for benefits, if that's appropriate. We also have a big employment piece. We have a social enterprise called MAG7, where we work with employers, especially in the warehouse and logistics sectors in central Ohio, and we prepare participants for that employment by providing forklift, OSHA, scanner, and other warehouse-type trainings. And one thing that we're very proud of is that we're able to provide a livable wage for our participants who work in the MAG7 social enterprise that we have. So, we're very happy about being able to do that, and that's very important to us. So, of course, housing is the biggest need that our participants face. We know the restrictions that they face and the stigma from landlords and from management companies, and it's very difficult for them to find housing. So, what we decided to do is we tried to, like, we try to provide as much as possible in-house, so we were trying to find ways to bring housing in-house as well and to help provide that for our participants. So, to that end, we have been able to obtain several houses that we then rehab and bring up to livable standards, and we provide sober transitional housing to some of our participants. It's stable. It provides stability for as long as they need while we help them make a plan to transition to more permanent housing. So, these houses, we do what's called a Solutions 18 program, so participants can either stay there in a sober transitional setting, or we do also promote homeownership, so we're able to help participants purchase that house potentially or another house. And then we also build relationships in the community, of course, with landlords, and, you know, they know our program and our participants, and we're able to work with them to kind of reduce some of that stigma and, you know, provide support to our participants, so landlords are more comfortable with that. So, we really look forward to, as I said, housing is the biggest need, and we have a good model and a good program going, so we're really hoping to continue working with the land bank and the city in general to help us expand our Solutions 18 housing program.
Thank you, Lena, for giving us an overview of your organization. I think it's incredibly critical that we continue to highlight employers that provide opportunities for our returning citizens, and I thought it was definitely key as we marry the conversations between housing and this subject matter in particular. So, thank you for being here this evening. Are there any additional comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Thank you.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Up next, we have ordinance 2416-2020 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Columbus Urban League in order to provide rental and mortgage assistance to residents impacted by COVID-19, to authorize a transfer of appropriations in an expenditure of $300,000 within the CARES Act Fund, and to declare an emergency. A few weeks back, CNN aired a story about Columbus and the eviction crisis that we are facing in the wake of COVID-19. Despite Despite already allocating over $10 million to support direct rental assistance, mediation, and legal representation, we still have families in need of help. I'm happy to support this ordinance today because we must continue our efforts to keep families safely housed as we fight this pandemic. I'd like to ask Columbus Urban League President Stephanie Hightower to talk with us about their housing work and how this funding will assist more families in our community. Oh, we cannot hear you. Try it again? No, we still can't hear you. We might have lost her altogether. Ms. Angie, did we lose Ms. Hightower? We have her video, and she is unmuting herself, but we are unable to hear her. My apologies. Okay. Well, President Hightower, we can't hear you, unfortunately, but I will, as we're trying to navigate this, if you want to keep trying, I'll toss it over to Director Stevens to talk perhaps a little bit more about the $10 million that's been allocated to provide emergency rental assistance and the dollars that Governor DeWine has officially announced that have been allocated to provide additional assistance for residents.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Chair Favor, members of council. I know in working with our partners in the housing field and important partners like the Columbus Urban League, we have made significant progress in getting dollars out to those families in need and trying to avoid evictions. Starting in May, when we issued our first tranche of CARES dollars of $3 million, we worked with Community Impact and their Hope Fund that had partners like the Urban League and others throughout the community who are working in this effort to really get into the eviction court once that opened up again at the start of the summer to help folks before they were evicted. So we started that. Council then backed and followed up in July with an additional $7 million of rental assistance funds that we have been getting out and working. To date, we've served over 5,000 households and getting, throughout this program, and getting rental assistance to keep people in their homes. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. President Hightower? We connected? No? Okay. Well, with that, are there any? We appreciate the work that you continue to do in the community, and I am honored to be able to support and uplift the efforts that the Urban League continues to make in the city of Columbus. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Our pass.
Thank you. Council President Harden, may I move on to criminal justice and judiciary?
Please.
Thank you. So before I hop into the ordinance, I'd like to start by offering that the topic we're preparing to review is not only disappointing, especially so in our heightened environment in which conversations around race and implicit bias are taking place, but also because of our conversations around budgeting and public safety. What we will hear about shortly is another example of the changes we must see occur within the operations of the Columbus Division of Police. Black police officers who take an oath to protect the life and liberty of their communities far too often are muted, voices, subjugated, and marginalized if they courageously speak their truth. This is a tragedy for our city. It is our duty to create a safe space for every resident who seeks justice and reform. So tonight, I have ordinance 2358-2020 to authorize the city attorney to settle the case of Carl Shaw v. City versus City of Columbus, pending before the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio Eastern Division, to authorize the expenditure of $475,000 from the general fund in payment of the settlement and to declare an emergency. I'd like to start off first with asking Richard Connelly's Solicitor General and the city attorney's office to provide us with comments in regards to the background of this case.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Council Member Favor, members of council. Officer Shaw has worked for the Columbus Division of Police since 1992 in a variety of roles, including the vice in narcotics units. In 2013 and 14, he worked in the Strategic Response Bureau and was heavily involved in investigating and shutting down hotels in the 161 corridor up by the continent. In August of 14, a fellow officer filed several complaints with chain of command about the sergeant over SRB, Sergeant Eric Moore. The complaints initially involved issues of misuse of property and overtime. Once the Internal Affairs Bureau began its investigation, this officer told IAB that Sergeant Moore had refused to supply equipment to African-American employees of SRB and that Sergeant Moore would typically refer to African-American employees, and I apologize for my language here, as monkeys or apes, and that he would use the N-word frequently. Other officers have also testified that they heard Sergeant Moore use that language. While the investigation was ongoing, Sergeant Moore transferred from SRB to the Narcotics Division. In December of 2014, IAB interviewed Officer Shaw. Officer Shaw told IAB at the time that he had never directly heard Sergeant Moore use racist language, but that he did hear secondhand reports that Sergeant Moore had used the N-word, had made racist jokes, had threatened to put a GPS unit on the car of an African-American officer, and had threatened to take two African-American officers, quote, "out back and kill them." While this was going on, the SRB unit was being shut down, so Officer Shaw had to find a new position. He applied for a position in Narcotics under Sergeant Moore. That position had a preference for a Spanish speaker. The collective bargaining agreement provides that any vacant position in the division goes to the person with the most seniority. The commander decided to interview every officer who bid on that position. He had most officers interviewed directly with Sergeant Moore. He had Sergeant Shaw and a second African-American officer interview with him and a lieutenant. During these interviews, Officer Shaw tells us that this commander, Commander Cameron, falsely accused him of not working when he was previously in Narcotics and knowingly using incorrect statistics from the division to make those accusations. Commander Cameron had an officer in mind to fill that position, a junior white officer. He applied to have a preference given to that officer outside of the collective bargaining agreement, and that was denied. Several, as the position was being filled, several African-American officers report to IAB that Sergeant Moore told them that the Spanish-speaking preference was, in fact, a requirement of the job, and as a result, they did not meet the minimum qualifications. Officer Shaw tells us that he was never actually offered the job, although the file claims that he rejected the position. Once this became known by management, the chief investigated the manner in which the job was filled and decided to vacate the posting. When the position was posted a second time, Officer Shaw was offered the position. Prior to accepting, he was shown a text message that Sergeant Moore had sent to another officer. That text message says, I have his, one of the officers who complained, audiotaped from his IAB interview. He told Sergeant Decker that I was a racist, but had no instance of anything I have ever did to him or any other black person. Carl did the same thing and added that I GPS'd officers' cars, but had no instance or proof. If we did that and accused a black officer of being racist with no proof, we'd do days off. Nothing will happen to them. Richard Moore, who is no relation to Sergeant Moore, went to DC Kluber and told him that I coerced him from taking my job. If he hadn't done that, Kim and Jeremy would both be working for me now, but he decided to play both sides, thinking I wouldn't find out. I'll never trust him, especially after I was keeping him in the loop the entire time. He shit on me and my team. That's worse than what the brothers did. I expect that out of them. If he didn't speak, but it was clear he better not take my job, the same goes for Carl and Richard Moore. Officer Shaw, at that point, met with Lieutenant Brus, the lieutenant over that narcotics section. During the meeting, Officer Shaw told the lieutenant that he did not feel that he could work for Sergeant Moore. Officer Shaw told the lieutenant that he had learned that Moore made threats that I better not take the job. The lieutenant told Officer Shaw that he would do his best to protect him, but he could not be there 24 hours a day. The lieutenant did not report these concerns up the chain of command, nor did he investigate Sergeant Moore's behavior. In late February of 2015, Officer Shaw learned that additional misbehavior had been committed by Sergeant Moore. First, he had learned that Sergeant Moore had gestured or started to draw his weapon on a Hispanic officer. Officer Shaw also learned that the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives was investigating Sergeant Moore for his attempted purchase of a Lightning Link. A Lightning Link is an illegal rate-of-fire accelerator that could turn a semi-automatic rifle, such as an AR-15, into a fully automatic and therefore illegal weapon. Officer Shaw told IAB about the Moore texts and the ATF issues. IAB confirmed that the ATF had, in fact, closed the investigation on Sergeant Moore as unfounded, and IAB did not further investigate that matter. Finally, on September 28, 2015, more than one year after the first complaints against Sergeant Moore were filed, IAB issued a 208-page report. In this report, Sergeant Decker concluded that Sergeant Moore did not adequately and equitably fill the narcotics position that Officer Shaw had applied for and that Sergeant Moore's texts may or may not have had racial animus, but his intention was to keep Officer Shaw and others from taking the narcotics job. Sergeant Moore was given a documented constructive counseling for the manner in which he filled the narcotics position. He was ultimately terminated because of abuse of overtime and improperly securing division property. Sergeant Moore appealed his termination to arbitration, and an arbitrator eventually reinstated him to his position.
Thank you, Solicitor General, for that background information. I just have a few questions, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues to ask additional questions. The offending officer, Sergeant Moore, had allegations against him that extended beyond racist actions. He had brought a gun accessory that caught the eye of the ATF. So can you explain that part of the case and how CPD addressed that concern when it was brought to their attention?
Absolutely. Once ATF informed CPD of the allegation, the sergeant at IAB began to look at it, but he was eventually told to just drop it. So CPD did not, in fact, actually complete an investigation on the Lightning Link.
Why is it better to settle this case versus going to trial? We're here at this moment to talk about a $475,000 settlement that definitely should cause everyone to take a pause. So why are we settling and not continuing to fight this legally?
We understand completely that a $475,000 settlement of any case is a very high-dollar amount and a very high request from our office to counsel. We don't make those requests lightly. In a civil rights action such as this, which, if we do not settle, would go to a jury trial, Officer Shaw is entitled to several different remedies. The first would be any type of back pay that he would have lost. So, for example, and he lost overtime opportunities because he was not working in narcotics. He would be entitled to that. He would be entitled to emotional distress damages. And as all members of council can imagine, after hearing some of the facts of this case, we believe a jury would offer, would determine a substantial award for emotional distress in a case such as this. Finally, if Officer Shaw were to prevail in trial and be even awarded nominal damages of $1, he would be entitled to have his full attorney's fees be paid for by the city of Columbus. Officer Shaw has had this case ongoing since 2015. He has had lawyers, very capable lawyers, representing him for five years. He has had three very capable lawyers, one of whom, you know, I can tell you, my research shows, has in the past gotten $500, $550 an hour awards from federal district court for his work. When you're asking a lawyer to take a case for five years and to put in the hundreds upon hundreds of hours that would also go towards preparing for and then doing trial, we would be facing a much higher ultimate damage award than we are in this force 75.
Thank you for that explanation. So because of the FOP contract, Sergeant Moore was able to see all of the allegations and evidence that was made against him by fellow officers. Is that correct?
That is correct. Under the terms of the FOP contract, anybody who is brought in for an interview for IAB has to be told whether they're the focus of the interview or a witness. They have to be told what the allegations are. They are given all of the evidence before the interview, so they know everything, you know, that they have been accused of and, you know, by whom the accusation has come.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues if they have any questions for our Solicitor General.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the way that you have brought this case to counsel. Thank you to the Solicitor General as well, Mr. Connelly's. Just to be clear, the offending officer is still currently an officer with this, the Columbus Division of Police.
Council President Harden, that is correct. He is still employed by the Columbus Division of Police.
Could you go back to, there was a, you mentioned one of the reasons why it's important to settle is because of the emotional distress that obviously Officer Shaw was under and that if we did not settle, that it is very logical that any court would deem what Mr. Shaw went through as emotional distress. Is that correct?
That is correct, Council President.
One of the things that stuck out to me when I was reading the report was an instance where Officer Shaw felt unsafe or so unsafe that he needed an unmarked car to sit out front of his home. Could you tell us about that piece and go back to that portion?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Counsel President Harden. There were the, as a result of certain threats that Sergeant Moore had made towards certain officers in the division, CPD did offer protection. Officer Shaw did not actually accept the protection. That went to Second Officer, Officer Cornet, who was also threatened. And so CPD did place an unmarked car outside of Officer Cornet's house. They, they asked, you know, if he wanted any kind of protection, and that was, that was the extent of what they had done for him.
Thank you. And the questioning again is around the distress that would have been involved where that type of offer was even made and it was, and based off of who would distress the threat was coming from, was it from another officer? Is that correct?
It was, Counsel President Harden. And, you know, I, I, I would submit to counsel that, as we all know, the, the job of a police officer is an incredibly dangerous and difficult one.
Certainly.
To have to show up to work where you're subjected to language like this, where you're subjected to behavior like this, and it continues to go on is simply, you know, inexcusable. For us to be in a position that, you know, it took 13 months to wrap up a report just compounds the distress that, you know, understandably, the people who were subjected to it had to live through. So that's, that's, there's no question that, you know, that type of language and that type of threat would directly hit somebody and hit somebody hard.
Thank you. You've had my time, Counsel.
Thank you.
I have a question, Counsel Member Faver.
Yes, Counsel Member Tyson.
So, so if I were probably in the viewing and listening audience and would realize that the city is paying some, has, is going to be, if we pass this ordinance, $475,000 based upon the conduct of an officer. I think the question that would be asked is, what happens to this officer? So I'd ask if you would just, just, could you share that, please?
Absolutely. Counsel Member Tyson, because of the structure of the collective bargaining agreement and the time limits that are put in there, there is nothing more that we can do to the sergeant who engaged in that behavior. The division attempted some discipline by giving him a, a counseling over the manner in which he filed, filled the job. They terminated him over abuse of overtime and equipment. That was overturned by an arbitrator. But because of the collective bargaining agreement, the timeframes and the limitations, there is nothing more that can be done to the sergeant.
And so thank you certainly, Solicitor General, for certainly sharing that so our, our constituents can hear that there is nothing that can be done when people are treated in this manner. And so I do understand that for Mr. Shaw that we've got to do our very best to try to, for lack of a better word, just try to make it right based upon the situation he's been, he's been subjected to. But it certainly does bring concern, you know, for me personally, as well as I would think our residents to hear that this behavior could happen. And our tax dollars are paying for this because it wouldn't happen in any other environment. And this has nothing to do with how difficult a police officer's job is. It's that, you know, we're not, that has nothing to do with it. But certainly in other environments, individuals would not continue to be working in other environments with these types of behaviors. So, so thank you for certainly sharing it. I wanted to make sure that our residents understood the bargaining agreement that we are faced with. And all we can do is try to make sure that Mr. Shaw feels like this community has heard, this council has heard and what has been going on and to try to provide a settlement for what he's had to experience. So thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Member, if I may add something to your comments that may help both counsel and any, any residents who are watching understand that one of the things that we have done as a result of this settlement is include a term in the EEO policies for the Columbus Division of Police that any violation, any sustained violation of an EEO policy from this point forward is now considered critical misconduct. And for purposes of CPD, critical misconduct is a very important term because that means suspension through termination. So going forward, we know that if, if any uniformed officer behaves in a manner that violates EEO, that that is harassment, retaliation, discrimination, there will be serious consequences to that officer.
Thank you, and that's good to know now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Member Tyson. I, I also want to make sure that we clarify that Sergeant Moore was actually terminated not for the reason that we are paying out this evening. He was terminated for the, for misuse of overtime and city property. And so that is, that is hard for me personally to reconcile that the complaint, and I truly do appreciate the, the changes to, to the EEO policy. But my concern is that would we still be here today if a complaint, a civil rights complaint is not taken seriously? And if it's not investigated thoroughly to the point where we can have a sustained complaint? So with that, are there any additional questions for our Solicitor General, for my colleagues?
Counsel Member Faver, I'm, I'm sorry, President Pro Tim Brown, after you.
You can, you can go first, Counsel Member.
Chair Faver, just building on Mr. Solicitor General's, his last point. Wanted to ask the question, so obviously the E O C change here is important. But I think we all are sitting here tonight, understanding, and I don't want to speak for my, my colleagues, but I feel safe in saying so that we're all outraged at the facts that are contained within this case. Outside of the EEO change that you just mentioned, and maybe this is a question for Director Pettis as well, the processes, the systems here failed. What have we done as a city beyond what you just mentioned from an EEO perspective? Understanding the constraints of the collective bargaining agreement that we have in place, what else have we done to prevent this from happening again?
Counsel Member Dorans, I will take a first crack at it. And Director, you may be in a better position than I to, to give a full answer. But one of the things that we have done as a city is to hire an assistant director in charge of EEO for the Department of Public Safety so that EEO investigations are no longer going to be done by I A B. They are being done directly by the department. She is a, a H R professional who has been doing this for a lot of years. I've had prior experiences with her back when we both worked for the state of Ohio. And Kathleen Burke knows how to do an EEO investigation, takes it seriously and quickly and will get it done. So that is definitely a step in the right direction. I think also making sure that EEO violations are viewed as critical misconduct as opposed to a simple slap on the wrist is something that reinforces the concept that if you, if you misbehave, there are going to be consequences.
And Counsel Member Dorans, thank you for that question. And I think that it'll be a great opportunity for me to turn it over to Director Pettis to offer some additional comments on behalf of the Department of Public Safety and then hopefully to provide a response to Counsel Member Doran's question as well.
Thank you, President Harden, Counsel Member Faver, members of counsel. We in Public Safety support this resolution to a dark and troubling chapter for the Columbus Division of Police. As someone who has experienced racism firsthand at different points in my career, I have a deeply painful understanding of its destructive impact and why there can be absolutely no room for it and no tolerance for it. Racism demeans, devalues and destroys that is everything we stand against in our city and our safety forces. Standing against racism is not enough. We must also fight it on every front. That begins with acknowledging it where it exists. And unfortunately, it is everywhere and including the Division of Police. The Independent Matrix Report told us that. So have our officers of color. And so have our residents who filled the streets of Columbus this summer, crying out for a fairer, more equal justice system. As we acknowledge racism in our ranks, we must take action against it. We have and we are. Last year, we created an Assistant Director of Public Safety position dealing strictly with EEO complaints and investigating them. The creation of this position allows officers and firefighters of any rank to bypass their chain of command and file a complaint directly with our office. As a matter of fact, we are adding another EEO position to our team to bolster this work and this commitment. We hope to have that second Assistant Director on board by the end of this year. Along with investigating complaints as they come forward, we are proactively instituting more training to prevent these incidents from happening in the first place. That training includes everyone, from our newest personnel, our cadets and recruits, to our investigators and internal affairs. The feedback we've received is that this has led to a heightened awareness and understanding of equal employment law and a stronger consistency in how those concerns are addressed. Assistant Director Kathleen Burke reports to me that some employees tell her they now feel more comfortable coming forward about concerns they have not reported in the past. Another way we improve our division is by diversifying it to make sure it reflects our community. We are laser focused on increasing diversity in our safety forces through our cadet program, which allows underrepresented communities the chance to get paid hands-on training and level the playing field when it comes to applying to be police officers and firefighters. Our office created this program, and Mayor Ginter has fully backed it, committing more than $1 million in funding to make it possible. The second class of cadets, which started last month, is 75% women and minorities. From the first class of 16 cadets, 12 of them are currently in the hiring process to become police officers. We've also stepped up our minority recruitment efforts for both police and fire. In August, we celebrated an incredible number, 49% diversity in our latest round of police officer applicants. That's a milestone no one in recruiting can remember us reaching before. Last month, the mayor of Dayton asked us to speak to her leadership team about the success we've had in recruiting. They were excited and impressed by what we're doing here and are looking at our recruiting efforts as a model they can learn from. Racism is a systemic issue that we have up to now failed to eradicate from society. There are elements and vestiges of it everywhere. To think that it's a problem in everyone else's house, but not ours, is just not being honest. What is critical is that we acknowledge it, attack it where we find it, and send an unambiguous message. There is no room for racism here. We don't tolerate it. We won't tolerate it. Thank you, counsel members.
Thank you, Director Pettis. Counsel Member Dorans, let me turn it back over to you to ask any additional follow-up if you might have any.
No, I appreciate both the answers from the Solicitor General and Director Pettis.
Counsel Member Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, Counsel Member Faver. I, I similarly, I sort of similar line of questioning to what Counsel Member Doran said. So I don't know that I really need to ask another question of the Public Safety Director or of the Solicitor. But, you know, what I, I appreciate the further context they've both given about what they're trying to do to prevent this from happening in the future. But, you know, we all, I think on this council, have concerns about as good as our recruitment efforts might be or that we may aspire them to be. How do we assure black residents who apply to our department that they're not going to be treated this way when racist speech and racist actions aren't enough to get you fired? But, you know, the overtime abuse is. I mean, what is really, like, what is more costly to taxpayers? Not the overtime abuse. It's more costly to taxpayers to have this, this racist speech and action tolerated, and that's bad for all of us. So thank you for the additional context and, and responses from the Solicitor and the Public Safety Director and Counsel Member Faver. I appreciate the time you've taken on this ordinance tonight. It feels unsettling, right? To settle because it doesn't, nothing can really feel like justice. So I just appreciate that you've taken the care to try to talk residents through what is pretty outrageous.
Absolutely. And thank you, Counsel Member Brown. And I, I want to clarify that and Officer Shaw has joined us this evening and is going to provide some remarks, which I truly appreciate as we continue to have this very candid conversation of what, of what reimagining public safety looks like for the residents in Columbus. But I want to be clear that this dialogue, this, this line of questioning that we're having is not in support of the fact that a wrong was committed against Officer Shaw. And he deserves, he should not have, have had to incur that type of treatment by our department. And we are now in the position to, to, to take care of that. So I just want to make sure that residents understand where this position is. That for me personally, I'm not against Mr. Shaw receiving this, these, these funds, right? But to that point, just last month, I believe this council was presented with legislation in regards to the seizure fund, which I believe it was an allotment of $2 million-ish. So to Director Pettis or to the Solicitor General, and I believe Counsel Member Remi might have a question along these lines too. You know, can we look at the seizure fund to be utilized to pay for settlements that, of this nature in order to relieve taxpayers of this burden?
Council President Harden, Councilmember Faver, and members of council, the Division of Police provided me with more than 15 pages of information, providing an overview of both federal and state drug seizure fund permissible and impermissible uses. And included were 10 examples of impermissible uses of drug seizure funds. One of those 10 includes costs for lawsuits impermissible. So in essence, the answer is no. For something such as this, we're not allowed to use drug seizure funds.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Remy, did you have any additional questions? Floor's yours.
There we go. Yeah, I know all of us have pretty much brought that question up about seizure funds and certainly are going to be looking very closely at ways that ties directly to the safety budget, you know, in the future on these types of settlements because it's certainly, as had been mentioned by all my colleagues, it's very unsettling. I wanted to go back to the Solicitor General here for a moment because there were a couple things I wanted a little clarification on. You had mentioned there was threats that were taken, and I'm not quite clear if that was Sergeant Moore, who was it that made those threats? But I wanted to first ask that question so that there's some clarity in my mind about that because although it's not going to change my vote on this thing, I want it to be brought to light about it.
Councilmember, yes, the threats were made by Sergeant Moore, and it was threats to take African-American officers out back and kill them.
Okay. And I wanted you to talk a little bit, I think you can speak to this, but if not, Director Pettis certainly can, but talk a little bit about, you mentioned the timeframe has lapsed. And I think this is an important piece of the contract that I think it needs to be brought, some awareness needs to be brought to it.
So, under the collective bargaining agreement, there is a specific amount of time under which complaints have to be filed after an action has been undertaken. If it's members of the public, it's 90 days. If it's divisional, it's 180 days. And anything that gets, that is outside of that is just barred from being investigated. So, I apologize, go ahead.
No, and so with this being elevated to what you called a critical offense, things along these lines, does that change that timeframe? Does that allow a further opportunity to investigate beyond the contractual agreements?
It doesn't do that, Councilmember, but what it does do is assure everyone, the officers who are employees of the Division, Council, and the residents, that if an officer is found to have engaged in discriminatory harassing, retaliatory conduct, no longer will there be simply, literally, a slap on the wrist. That's what a documented constructive counseling is. It's the same thing as, you know, not wearing your hat properly. That won't happen again. There will be actual punishment for an officer that engages in this kind of behavior. And as an employer, if we can show that we promptly corrected the bad behavior, we aren't liable. So by changing the policy, we are doing two things. First of which is we are helping to protect the public purse, but more importantly, we are also helping to protect the employees of the Division because it is now clear in black and white that if you engage in this behavior, there will be serious consequences. And by giving that notice, if an employee engages in this type of behavior, they should not be able to successfully argue to an arbitrator, "Well, I thought I was only going to get a DCC for this."
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And thank you, Councilmember Faver, for your work on this.
Absolutely. Let me turn it over to Officer Carl Shaw and his attorney, Mr. Frederick Gitz. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, to provide some additional remarks for context for councilmen and residents who are watching. Oh, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Shaw. I cannot hear your tone.
Okay. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My last name, if you ever saw the movie Chinatown, it's pronounced "Itis," but everybody mispronounces it, so you're welcome to do so. Thanks for this opportunity, and I hope, counsel, and thank you, Councilmember Faver and Mr. President, I hope you bear with me because as hopeful as I am about what Director Pettis said and Rich Kullig, who we know each other from many cases, I want you to, I think this council is going to have a hard job, and it goes beyond what you've heard. This case, and I think Rich gave a fairly decent description, but some important things weren't mentioned that are going to demonstrate to you why, and I don't want to be political, but why the ballot issue is so important and why this body has more to do. I did, along with a partner of mine who's no longer alive, in 1978, the class action against the Columbus Police Department, in which the federal court found there is a color line in the Columbus Police Department. This case and two other cases, one of which I'm not involved with, and the other one involves a person named Kevin Morgan, who's at least watching tonight, are very closely related. We learned from that experience, that federal case, which we won, it took almost 10 years to litigate, that, and we had court orders mandating changes, that as soon as the order was removed, which about 10 years later, I witnessed here as a citizen, and because of the kind of work I've been doing all these years in civil rights cases, everything turned around. Why, and we had what happened here five years ago to Carl Shaw, what happened to Kevin Morgan, what happened to Lieutenant Melissa McFadden, they are all closely related. What happened? You can have an HR person, but the HR person isn't the one who issues discipline. It's the chain of command. What happened in Carl's case was that the chain of command did nothing. These are not people who haven't been trained, haven't gone to HR sessions. They had in front of them, I can, and I know Rich knows from the testimony we took in the depositions in this case, they knew everything you heard about from Mr. Kullig and Moore. They knew about the racist epithets. They knew about the threats of violence. They knew about an officer ordering an illegal device. By the way, he had a weapon in his office. He kept it there. He knew that Carl Shaw became aware of that and reported it. We don't know why and how he knew, by the way, because he wasn't supposed to know before the investigation reached a point when they interviewed him, but we know from depositions, somehow it was leaked to him. We also know that he lied to the chief of police. He falsely represented to the chief that the Black officers who wanted to go to the narcotics unit had withdrawn their request. Black officers said that's not true, and it certainly wasn't true for Carl. We know that the chain of command became aware of by the time this report went up that the lieutenant in charge of that narcotics unit, who Carl went to, because he was a great undercover officer in human trafficking and drug dealing. He won accolades. He's an extraordinary man, and I cannot begin to tell you the respect I have for him. Because doing this case and working there is a danger. Common sense should tell anybody involved or aware of this. But he went to his lieutenant and said, "Look, I got this text message," actually, a white officer got this text message, threatening him if he took the job. And what did the lieutenant do? Nothing. He's on the command staff. Later on, the rest of them became aware of this. What did they do? Commanders, captains, deputy chiefs, nothing. And the most, and I could go on and on, and I know it's late and we should be careful, but I think this is important enough to fully understand it. They also knew that Moore came into the IAB interview, and this is what he admitted, after IAB got that text saying, "You better not take this job." And the other Black officer who did not do a case was told, "If you take this job, I'm going to put you on a desk, you're lazy." I mean, just every stereotype prejudicial statement you can imagine. And Moore called him into his office, and Moore had been ordered not to have contact with him by the commander. A direct order. It's insubordination. Did they charge him for insubordination? No. No. That's the same commander who, with a lieutenant, which all the evidence is, is highly, highly unusual, called Carl into this special interview when he was still interested in narcotics. And you heard from Rich the things he said, but what Rich didn't mention, he started talking to him about Ramparts out in California. Now think about that. Ramparts was a case where officers had stolen money, had filed false charges, were crooked. Why was he talking about that to Carl Shaw? He never talked to any other white candidates about Ramparts. He admitted that. It was a racist interview, and by the way, you don't have to guess about it, it was recorded. Carl had the foreknowledge to record it. So this all goes up. Shaw comes into IAB, is interviewed, and the sergeant investigating asks him, "Why did you send that text message making that threat?" What did he say? Because Carl and his buddies, you know, I'm not giving the exact quote, but basically said, "Because they called me a racist." Which, by the way, all the evidence was, he is, was a racist. Maybe he's seen the light now, but I can only speak for what happened. And now think about this, all of you are experienced people. He admitted he sent that threat because Carl Shaw had reported discrimination. And you haven't even heard the other discrimination. That's illegal. So in the interview, the chain of command knew he admitted violating federal and state law. He's a sergeant with authority, using it to retaliate against the Black officer reporting civil rights. That went all the way up the chain of command. And all they did was give him, quote, "constructive counseling." I didn't see anything constructive about it. Let me tell you a little more about it. The investigation took almost a year and a half. The white officer, and by the way, you can, you'll hear it from Carl, many people, and I had the experience when I did the class action, white officers coming forward made the difference in many cases. As the white officer who told Carl and showed him that text, they are risking their careers when they do that. The white officer who came forward with the original report of the racist epithets and the threats, guess what happened to him? He was charged for not reporting it soon enough. This departmental charges, which for those who are listening, is like the capital punishment to get formal charges against you. That's the only thing that can lead to suspensions and terminations. Not only that, but he was immediately put, they call it 580, into the administrative bureau. And whereas the sergeant throughout most of this time, year, functioned as a sergeant. He never had his badge and gun taken. And that's why he was in a position to discriminate against Carl when he wanted to become a narcotics officer again, because the chain of command didn't do anything about it, nor did they do anything to the lieutenant, who clearly didn't give him any assurances that he would protect him, who didn't report it up the chain of command. And by the way, that lieutenant was aware of what Carl, you heard Rich talk about, the weapon being pulled out against another officer of color. He never did anything about it, and then even after Carl comes to him and says, "Well, by the way, I'm getting threats." And he knows, whoa, wait a minute, that, he was threatening this other officer. Still did nothing about it. So when you put all of that together, when I hear Director Pettis says, "We have HR people, we're going to do more training," I commend you for it. It's good. It's essential, but it's not going to solve the problem. Because as many people may not know, you can't, Director Pettis has no jurisdiction for a constructive counseling or a reprimand or even a suspension of three day, under three days. He, under the contract, he can only hear certain types of discipline. And if the chain of command is going to do this with someone like this officer, and I've always, frankly, I've always taken the position, he wouldn't be back on the department if they charged him. If an arbitrator heard what he had done, I don't think he'd be a police officer right now. Now let's contrast what happened to Officer Shaw and Moore with Lieutenant McFadden, who I think some of you may have met or heard from. I think she's spoken to you. But she was accused of making or gauging racist or discriminatory conduct. Now what did Chief Jacobs do with her? She was, very quickly, there wasn't a year-long investigation, I don't remember the exact time, but we're probably talking weeks, was reassigned to a position without any authority. She was quickly charged with, formally charged for her conduct, alleged conduct, as you, I'm sure you heard from her, it's not true, but that's, you know, I'm not here to talk about innocence, I'm talking about the double standard. She was reassigned, she was charged, and thankfully for Director Pettis's prissience and, you know, experience, life experience, he knew something was wrong, and she was fired. She recommended termination. And thanks to the director, she's back at work. Kevin Morgan is in the virtual audience here tonight, and he had exactly the same kind of experience. He is the only officer during the entire time that Chief Jacobs was chief, and this is sworn testimony by our own assistants and her. He's the only officer ever fired without any prior discipline, who was charged only with theft of time, you know, taking money they didn't earn. He's the only one, a Black man, who was fired. Whereas sergeants, who I'm sure you are all very well-informed people, a few years ago, several sergeants were charged with basically stealing money because they didn't work the time, it was in the dispatch, it was all over the news. They stole thousands and thousands of dollars. Some, one of them lied about it, was in charge with deceit. Another one had a prior discipline who, for lying, actually been found to have lied. He wasn't fired for it. And there's many other examples, I won't go there, but they're in an opinion in Kevin Morgan's case of, from the judge in federal court, and I urge you to read it. But why am I bringing it up? Because they were given a deal. The chief didn't recommend discharge for any of them. Instead, the chief offered to a suspension for which they could use or forfeit leave time to reduce whether they lost any time at all. All of them are still working there. All of them are still working there, never lost their career. Kevin Morgan, and all of them were briefly taken off their assignment, briefly had their badge and gun and put in what's called a radio room or the administrative office, and then came back to work. Whereas Kevin was in the administrative office for almost two years. They immediately removed, if you bring up questions about his guilt of any misconduct, and eventually fired him. Now, here's the final way, I will, I'll stop.
Okay.
He went to arbitration, and I wonder if any of you know about this. He went to arbitration, Kevin Morgan. The union and the police department have a deal. If, one second, if the chief offers a deal to an officer, like happened with all these other theft cases, they are not allowed to bring it up in arbitration. So here, imagine, you're the arbitrator, and you are not being told by the union's attorney, and Kevin Morgan's not allowed to say, look, there are all these other people who were not terminated, and as Rich said, the importance of the new rule is theoretically that you have consistent discipline, so you can't just target blacks. Well, they have an agreement. So that Kevin's and his attorney's hands were tied, they couldn't even mention all these other people, only the black officer. So when you have this system in place, training is not a solution, it's an improvement. Having an outside body, and I'm going back to what's on the ballot, is an improvement, not a solution if they don't make the decision, but only make recommendations. What we have to do here is recognize that you can take action. I don't agree with Mr. Collins. Retaliation, denial of civil rights is a crime under Ohio law. There's a misdemeanor offense to deny a citizen their civil rights under law. None of these officers have ever been charged for that. Moore was in charge for that. And my understanding of the contract, if it matters, is a criminal matter, the time limits that create the pressure of 90 days, or as otherwise agreed, don't apply. So there's many points to this.
Thank you so much, and I just want to make sure that the viewing and listening audience understands that today, we're talking specifically about Officer Shaw. And we do understand that there have been numerous officers who have been in similar situations to Mr. Shaw. But Mr. Shaw, Officer Shaw, first of all, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate your time. As I stated to you earlier, I hate that this is the reason why we're here to have this conversation with you, but it's a conversation that I personally welcome, because we get to have a true conversation about reimagining public safety without admitting where we're falling short as a city, and specifically within this department. And so I'm in the mindset that this specific situation, we can't train ourselves out of it. And so I appreciate you just sharing some brief remarks on your behalf.
I mean, I started this and I stood up because it's wrong. And it's not just about, it's not about the money. This whole process was stressful. I mean, you stay up at night, not sleeping, thinking about this case. This case could have been solved if the chain of command would have allowed the internal affairs investigator to do his job. He did an investigation and wrote it up, and the chain of command had him remove almost 100 pages out of his investigation. If you go back and read his deposition, he stated he wanted to get him for lying, for all the racial issues, but the chain of command would not allow him to investigate it. I recorded most of my interviews with Cameron, well, with the commander and lieutenant. I made them public record through the city attorney's office. But still, the chain of command, commanders, deputy chiefs, chiefs, they knew all this. And they still, they would not go after him for the racial issue. They did not want to face the racial issue that we have on this department. And that's one of the reasons why I went ahead and settled, so that we could be here tonight talking about it, because it needs to be dealt with. You know, he was allowed to make threats. When I went to internal affairs, I made it sure that I took someone, a representation from the F O P with me, so that they were aware of what I was about to say. The F O P, they didn't represent me, they represented him. That's the issue that we're having, and that's the reason why systemic racism exists on this department, and it continues. You know, it's good to talk about the hiring practice. I was removed from the list. I have a younger brother that applied for the police department. They scored him in the 70 percentile, so he couldn't get on. But he's an attorney right now with the Justice Department. This is what minorities are going through, trying to get on this department. If you go back and read the depositions, you have a commander saying black officers are treated different than white officers. But this commander is not stepping forward and doing anything about it. They are allowing it. That's the reason why these other cases, the Kevin Morgans and Lieutenant McFadden, are existing, because people do know about it, but they're not stepping up to do anything. This case would have went nowhere if white officers wouldn't have stood up. The one that initially came forward had his gun and badge taken away from him and put on desk duty, and then given it, they gave it back to him. But then, when I filed a complaint through the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, and they thought they were going to win that, they went back and retook his gun and badge back, trying to punish him again. This is what goes on in C P D. It's stressful, but it's needed, and I'm doing this because younger officers need to have an ear and a way out and able to report when they're discriminated against.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Fred, before we circle back around, I have to, we have two speakers that have signed up to speak tonight. And I want to make sure, a gentleman whose name has been brought up quite a few times this evening has asked to provide a public commentary. And so, Mr. Kevin Morgan, please state your name, and you have three minutes. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. I am going to agree with everything my attorney, Mr. Gettys and Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw said. And I just want to just go ahead to defer any questions that you have or that's already been spoken of, just relay them to Mr. Gettys.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And with that, let me go ahead and loop in our last speaker for the evening, Mr. Sean Ms. Angie, do we have Sean?
Yes, he has been unmuted.
Mr. Walton, the floor is yours.
He's on.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes, there we go.
Okay, sorry about that. I'll keep this very brief and, you know, just, you know, limit my comments, but I just want to reiterate that, you know, this entire process has taken, you know, five or six years now to get to this point. And so, you know, I think it just sends a message when other officers, you know, see what Mr. Shaw went through and what other officers are going through, and just the systemic issues that they have to navigate in order to simply have their truths heard and acknowledged. So while this, you know, dark troubling chapter is coming to a close, the story is still being written. And so, you know, I just ask that, you know, we have a sense of urgency when looking at these issues, whether it's an officer or a citizen, and, you know, I think that we're better than, you know, the years that it takes to navigate this, as, you know, Attorney Gettys mentioned with, you know, the case that took 10 years in the 80s to navigate. I think that we've come to a point where we know the issues, and we are seeing real transformative ways to approach these issues. And so I just, you know, urge counsel to, you know, consider the expediency when, you know, trying to transform public safety in this city, and I'll waste the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. And then, Mr. Gettys, you're on mute.
I always think somebody else is controlling it, especially in my case. I just want people to know, and I really appreciate Rich mentioning the new rule, but I want everyone to hear and know that Carl, that was a condition of the settlement. And because of the settlement, the parties have agreed that federal court will monitor the settlement, so we can be assured that that new rule is actually implemented. And that's a big step forward. Not, we're not there yet, but it's a good step. And I think Director Pettis's changes are all other steps, but we have a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Before we, I call the vote, are there any additional questions or comments, feedback from my fellow colleagues? Yes, Council President Harden?
Just since we have Officer Shaw here, I think it's important for me as Council President just to say, and hopefully that this settlement today is just one step in the direction. I think you spoke up earlier, it's not about the money, you said, it's about creating a pathway so other minority officers feel safe within our department. We are trying to create a police department that is for everyone. And if folks are upset out there about this case, if folks are upset about these structural issues, I think Attorney Gettys brought it up, there is an opportunity over the next coming days to affect how this department and how this city acts pertaining to investigations in terms of police misconduct, and that's issue two. So I just want to offer my apologies to Officer Shaw and look forward to voting on this, but then look forward to the much harder work that we have lay ahead of reimagining public safety for all of our officers, but more so for all of our community members as well. Thank you, Councilman Faver.
Thank you, Council President Harden. And I will also offer that Officer Shaw has also himself and offered to continue to work alongside Columbus City Council as we navigate the next stage of reimagining public safety. Something that he does not have to do, he could clearly wash his hands of this entire debacle. But I welcome that, that collaboration, and I think it was incredibly important for Attorney Gettys to remind us how we were able to reach that settlement with that important negotiation piece with the city attorney's office. With that, I would move for adoption, or not adoption, oh my gosh, I've lost it now.
Passage.
Passage.
I second it.
Member Tyson.
Thank you again. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Fast.
Thank you, thank you. And Council President Harden, I promise you, I'm almost finished. I have one piece of legislation to introduce from the floor.
Please.
It is ordinance 2424-2020 to authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with Step Mobile LLC as a sole source provider according to Chapter 329 of the City Code to authorize the expenditure of up to $329,700 from the CARES Act Fund for implementation and use of software that will implement an electronic workflow and electronic bench tool and to declare an emergency. I'd like to invite Franklin County Municipal Court Administrative Judge, Judge Barrows, to make any further comments on this ordinance. Judge Barrows, are you still there? Did we lose Judge Barrows?
He has left, I believe.
Council President Harden, would you like me to proceed with the vote?
Please.
I would move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
The ordinance is passed.
Thank you, that's all I have for my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come is the Environment Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilwoman Remy. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President Harden. I'm excited tonight. I have one item in the Environment Committee to read over, and that's ordinance number 2429-2020 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into grant agreements with various social service agencies in support of the Cleaner Columbus Employment Program, to authorize a transfer of appropriations and an expenditure within the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. According to a July study on the impact of COVID-19 in major U.S. cities, more than half of residents report experiencing serious financial problems. The Cleaner Columbus Employment Program will offer residents in five areas of the city the opportunity to have temporary employment for a two, for a two-week intensive effort to improve our streets. This will provide temporary assistance due to financial hardship experienced because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Temporary workers will be paid a minimum of $15 per hour and will be deployed within neighborhoods to perform litter cleanup and neighborhood beautification. The agencies receiving the grant funds will prioritize enrolling residents that have experienced employment disruption. As you can see, I'm very excited about this. As Chair of the Environment Committee, I've had the honor of speaking with residents all over our great city regarding the increase in litter, debris, and illegal dumping since the onset of COVID-19. For example, in 2019, K C B, Keep Columbus Beautiful, collected 214,000 pounds, that's 107 tons of litter. In 2020, now in the end of October, we've only collected 13 and a half tons of litter. There's a great disparity because of the impact of COVID-19. We also know that we have residents who are experiencing financial hardships due to unemployment. With this program, over 400 people can work 400, excuse, 40 hours at $15 an hour. To begin the Cleaner Columbus Initiative, we are starting in the Linden, Franklinton, and Hilltop neighborhoods, as well as certain areas of East and South Columbus. And I am thankful for our partners for the Cleaner Columbus Initiative, including the New Salem Baptist Church, Greater Hilltop Shalom Zone, Community Development for All People, Afficentric Personal Development Shop, and the Franklinton Board of Trade. We will begin to clean up areas based on feedback from neighborhoods, as well as data from the department, which include major corridors like Parsons Avenue, Livingston Avenue, Sullivan, East and West Broad Streets, Glenwood, Lockborn, Whittier, Joyce, Nelson Road, just to name a few. This evening, we have Jerry Saunders, Senior, Jerry Saunders, Senior, CEO of Afficentric Personal Development Shop, one of our five partners, to share a few words about this important project. Jerry, I want to thank you for joining us, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Well, thank you. And Councilman Remy, thank you for this opportunity, President Harden, and the rest of the council folks, I appreciate this opportunity to share some information. I know that it's late, and Councilman Remy has covered quite a few of the things that I would talk about. So, but I do want to talk about something that I think is extremely important. But first, I just want to say to you guys, I have not been on the call all evening, but from what I have seen, I just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate the work that you but from what I have seen, I just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate the work that you guys are doing for the citizens of Columbus, Ohio. Guys are doing an awesome job. And I know that times have been difficult with all the things that we going through, but just want to share those words of appreciation. In terms of APDS, we are Behavior Healthcare Center, and we specialize in providing counseling for substance use disorder and domestic violence, two major issues in our community. And while we focus on making sure that we are doing a good job with our clients, it's important for us how we impact outside around, and in the community also. So Councilman Remy has given us an opportunity to be able to impact outside the community. And I just want to share three quick things that I think is extremely important. First, it's employment for people. This program is important for people, and it also helps build self-esteem. And while some people say it's $2, $15 an hour, when you start talking about $250,000 going into a community where they wouldn't normally, it might be zero, $15 deposits, zero dollars an hour. And $250,000 is a major piece of showing some compassion and thoughtfulness to folks actually going into the holiday season. The second thing is that it builds a strong sense of community as we clean up some of the major streets that we travel and also some of the commonplaces. And the third thing, while it's two weeks, I think when people see visible results, it will, it will heighten the opportunity for people to join in and help keep the community clean. So I think that this is a major piece, and I'm hoping as always that we could make these two weeks, turn them into four weeks, six weeks, or whatever we can, if people seeing that folks are doing a tremendous job and making this thing happen. I won't take up any more time of your time. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity. And just as a point of order, President Harden, I'm not sure exactly how this worked, but when we say New Salem in the legislature, I don't know if we need to say community, the appropriate name for the organization, because it's a Community of Care and Development Foundation at New Salem. So I don't know how that works, but I just wanted to say that. I know sometimes you got to have the language just exactly right. So thank you for the opportunity to share some words. Councilman Remy, I hope that that's what you need for me to do this.
Absolutely. We certainly appreciate, we appreciate your comments. We'll make sure we'll take care of those technical pieces behind the scenes. But certainly, thank you for your partnership. Look forward to the opportunity to work with you as we move forward in this. You know, this legislation will allow us to accomplish two goals with one action, to clean up our neighborhoods and especially the gateways and thoroughfares. And also, we'll do in so, provide temporary assistance to those experiencing financial hardship because of the pandemic. I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues have any questions or would like to say anything. Council President Harden?
It is easy. I'm going to be very brief, but I don't want to let the moment go by without really making the connection between some of the conversations we've had in the last week or two around safety in our community and the need for people, especially young people, to have just a little, some support from government, from the organizations. I was out last week talking to a young person who had a tough go at it. And I asked this question, what would it take for you to, to transition your lifestyle? And without any prompting, this young man said a $20 an hour job. And if we're thinking about safety, if we're thinking about our community, we just can't not connect these two dots. That this is how we want to really think about how to make our community safer. We have to put resources in hand and give real folks opportunities to step out of their current environment. If not, then we're just talking in the wind. And so this is a two-week effort. It's a start. But I just appreciate your focus and how timely this is right now, and look forward to more long-term efforts in the future.
Thank you so much, Council President Harden. Do any of my other colleagues have any questions this evening? Comments? I, I'd like to thank Tim Swager, the Administrator, and particularly Director Gallagher for the support of the department as we move through and get this together. We certainly have, we have more work ahead of us as we try to get the equipment together and certainly make sure that, you know, 400 people are given the right tools to be able to do this type of work. But, but I know we are in very capable hands, so certainly appreciate that. So thank you, Director Gallagher. She's on the call with us here tonight. And of course, my team, Jeff Carter, and, and all of their work in Legislative Research Office as well, for Matt Erickson, for their help. I would like to first move, I would first like to amend this ordinance, replacing New Salem Baptist Church with the Community of Care and Development Foundation. And I would like to move by voice.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Miss Favor?
Abstain.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes, yes.
Yes, ordinance is amended.
And now I move for passage by voice, as amended.
Second.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Miss Favor?
Abstain.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you very much. That's all I have in the Environment Committee. Now may I move on to Administration Committee?
Sure.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I have one item in the Administration Committee this evening, ordinance number 2357-2020, to authorize the Human Resources Department Director to accept a $95,000 grant from the International Public Management Association for Human Resources, the National Association of State Treasurers Foundation, the Center for State and Local Government Excellence, with support from Wells Fargo Foundation, to authorize the appropriation of funds in the amount of $95,000 and to declare an emergency. The Department of Human Resources has been awarded funding from the International Public Management Association for Human Resources, the National Association of State Treasurers Foundation, the Center for State and Local Government Excellence, with support from Wells Fargo Foundation. This legislation authorizes the Human Resource Director to accept and appropriate grant funds of $95,000. These funds will be used to develop or expand customized financial wellness programs for our public employees and their families to help them navigate financial challenges now or in the future, reduce debt, save for retirement, or reach other financial goals. The period, the grant period commences upon receipt of the funds and ends on September 30th, 2021. This ordinance is submitted as an emergency to allow the citywide training and development office, together with the employee benefit and wellness team, to develop or expand customized financial wellness programs as soon as possible. This evening, we have Andrea Williams with the City of Columbus Citywide Training and Development Office, who will share additional details regarding these, these programs. Andrea, thank you for joining us this evening. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman Remy. I am excited to just talk about something that we are excited to offer City of Columbus employees. You know, in a recent national poll conducted by SLGE, 56% of state and local public employees reported that their family has been negatively impacted financially by the crisis, the COVID crisis, and more than half are worried about their family finances, losing their job, furloughs, pay, benefits, you name it. So this one-year grant comes at a time when many of our state and local government employees, but just many of our employees, continue to serve in their jobs while COVID continues to go on. So many governments are also confronting unprecedented budget shortfalls, and workers are also increasingly concerned about finances. So what we know now is that we want to walk alongside the employee right now, and that is more important than ever with the devastating impacts of COVID-19. It is imperative to see the employee as a comprehensive and unique individual navigating the waters of the demanding and unpredictable world, and we want to walk with them, not just say that, here you go, we provided you a job, and that's all we can do. But we think that we can do more, especially when we saw that this grant might be available to us. So you've already mentioned the amount and the entities that are going to help us, but it ranges from, anywhere from starting out, family members, this is specifically directed towards employees and their family members, but the topics of discussion will range anywhere from just starting out and how do you work financial awareness? And where do you start out, all the way to retirement and some other things in between there that we are excited to offer our employees and their family members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a very exciting grant. It's always nice to see when we win grant dollars. And so appreciate all the work that you're doing in citywide training, and certainly Director Brandon for her work leading the department. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to say this evening, Director? She's on the elusive, the elusive mute button tonight.
Chairman Remy, President Harden, I just want to thank all of council and you for your favorable consideration of this grant. I want to extend a thank you to my team member there, Andrea, and Jacob Hiddle was also involved in the application process just for looking out for these innovative ways and staying at the forefront of some creative ideas and ways to get important information to our employees. So I appreciate them, and I certainly appreciate council's consideration of this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Brandon. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much, Council President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee coming for council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilman Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 2368-2020 to authorize the Office of the Mayor to modify by increasing three existing contracts to provide neighborhood prenatal care, coaching for the, for first-time moms, and weekly educational and nutritional sessions in support of the Celebrate One Enhanced Maternal Health Program through December 30th of 2020, and to authorize expenditure of $200,504.79 from the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. Celebrate One has been awarded funding to provide prenatal and family support in Franklin County aimed at the reduction of infant mortality. Of course, projects include the City of Columbus servicing pregnant and parenting families through the Community Health Workers or Community Connectors and Evidence-Based Home Visiting Program. Community workers will provide community health worker support and evidence-based home visitation, as well as assistance with scheduling their first prenatal appointments and providing weekly educational and nutritional sessions. That's Moms-to-Be. Before COVID, Moms-to-Be provided in-person services and support to roughly 100 to 130 women pregnant and postpartum each week in all eight Celebrate One priority neighborhoods. And at these weekly sessions, healthy meals were served because over 80% of the Moms-to-Be participants were food insecure, 80%. And as a result of pandemic, sessions have been conducted virtually, and that means that moms are not receiving nutritional meals to support a healthy pregnancy or first year of life. These funds will allow Moms-to-Be to contract with Life Care Alliance to provide food delivery services to participants who are food insecure. Also, the Physicians Care Connection staff were not able to work in the office at the same time due to COVID-19. So they have to have staggered schedules, and rearranged office space has helped. But there's still a need to invest in its remote work capabilities to ensure uninterrupted operations as their clients are the most vulnerable in the community. And so we, this fund will provide hardware and software to be updated or replaced with limited resources for the purchase of personal protective equipment and other safety measures as more frequent office cleaning. And then lastly, I was going to say lastly, the other organization is going to be Restoring Our Own Through Transformation, which is roots home visitors and do less provide guidance and support throughout their pregnancy. And then we will also be hiring community health workers and home visitors. Community partners will provide neighborhood prenatal care, again, coaching for the first-time moms, and weekly educational programs. These additional funds will come from the Federal CARES Act in the amount of $200,504.79. And these organizations will each receive, Moms-to-Be will receive $43,754.79, Physicians Care Connection will receive $76,750, and Restoring Our Own Through Transformation is $80,000. There's one more, so. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2417-2020 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreements of multiple human service organizations and to authorize a transfer and expenditure of $286,577 within the CARES Act Fund and to authorize a payment of expenses starting March 1 of 2020 and to declare an emergency. Those organizations are Aging Solutions for Central Ohio, Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, and the Ohio Domestic Violence Network and Voice Corps. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Miss Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance 2431-2020 to authorize the Director of Development to modify grant agreements with various social service agencies by adding additional funds in a total, in a total amount up to $250,000 to provide utility assistance grants to qualified individuals and households, to authorize an expenditure of up to $250,000 from the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. The organizations who will receive those dollars will be the Central Community House of Columbus, St. Stephen's Community House, Mid-Ohio Board of Independent Living, the Community Refuge and Immigration Services, and Gladden Community House. If there are no questions or comments, and this will again help to pay their utility bills and other household bills. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage by voice vote.
Second.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Miss Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in, in this committee this evening is ordinance 2445-2020 is to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into grant agreements with the multiple human service organizations to authorize a transfer and expenditure of $216,600 within the CARES Act Fund and to authorize a payment of expenses starting March 1 of 2020 and to declare an emergency. And I would now ask my colleague Emmanuel Remy to share more information about this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Tyson. I appreciate the opportunity to read further into this. As we know, the COVID-19 pandemic has caused unforeseen needs among Columbus and Franklin County residents. In addition, human services agencies working to meet those needs have been impacted by unforeseen and unbudgeted costs. As a result, many residents and nonprofit human service providers are experiencing economic instability. It is essential for the city of Columbus to invest in ways that increase the resilience and stability. So these are a group of organizations that I have chosen to support with my colleagues' assistance. And so in this package, we are going to support Elevate Northland, Harmony Project, Stonewalk Columbus, MPREM Holistic Resource, Community Resource Center, Helping Hands, and the Salvation Army. Elevate Northland is an organization that will be counseling small businesses, especially those in the new American immigrant population, how to navigate this COVID environment and also to help and assist with providing technology to many of the people that they assist as they go through this. The Harmony Project, as many know, is a flagship 500 Voice The Harmony Project, as many know, is a flagship five-hundred Voice Corps, but many don't know that the community service aspect and what they do in partnership with our Wrexham Parks Department, they're going to use this opportunity to also be beautifying green spaces that continue to serve a vital function to our community during this time, certainly supporting Stonewall and connecting members of the LGBTQ plus communities and allies to virtually support their mission. Imprim is a food bank on the north side that, as Pastor Alex told me today, serves about six point seven percent of the total need in Franklin County, so it's a large food bank that is available for all three shifts of people that might need food up there, and of course, the need has been significant. Helping Hands is a free medical clinic that provides absolutely free, full-service medical care, that they're going to use this money to purchase personal protective equipment, as well as that help them operate in the cold weather while people are waiting to get into the facilities during this COVID environment. And then finally, the Salvation Army has been, I just got that update on their mission today, and they are up over two hundred and fifty-five percent over the, over last year, and in fact, in the Hilltop, they are up three hundred percent with their food pantry needs, so it is significant. All of these organizations have been doing great work, and we appreciate the opportunity to support them, and certainly ask for my colleagues' support as we move forward. So with that, I will turn it back over to Councilmember Tyson, and appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Remy, and I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. That concludes the legislation in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The final committee to come before council is the Small Minority Business Committee. I chair that committee. The first ordinance that I'm going to read is ordinance 2390-2020 is to approve the report of the Assessment Equalization Board appointed in connection with the Plan of Services for the Fifth Avenue and Fourth Street Special Improvement District of Columbus, including the changes to the estimated assessments recommended by the board and to declare an emergency. In late June, council adopted a resolution declaring the necessity to implement the plan of service adopted by the Fifth Avenue and Fourth Street Special Improvement District. The property owners within the CID wish to authorize the CID for a five-year term. The major activities of the CID include cleaning services, safety services, homeless outreach, promotions, and beautification. Sixty percent of the property owners based on front to sign the CID petitions demonstrating that they were interested in creating and participating in such CID. A notice was sent to all property owners by the Clerk of Council in late June, and several objections were received. Therefore, an assessment equalization board was appointed by council based on Ohio Revised Code Section seven to seven dash one six. The assessment equalization board met on October sixth, two thousand and twenty to hear all objections to the assessment. The board ruled on all the objections and made a further recommendation to city councils to reduce the assessment for all condo associations who provide overlapping services as the CID by fifty percent annually. In short, the board recommended cutting the assessment to condo owners in half, in consideration that they likely have already paid homeowner association fees that may provide similar services as the CID. The board recommended not reducing the assessment to commercial owners. This legislation is the final of four actions required by Chapter seventeen ten of Ohio Revised Code. I just want to thank the appointed members of the Equalization Board who met for a very tantalizing and engaged meeting and gave us these recommendations. Do I have any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the row.
Ms. Brown.
By voice. Got it. Thank you, Madam.
Yes, sorry, I jumped the gun, Clerk.
That's all right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Abstain.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed. The final ordinance to come before council.
Madam, quick. The final ordinance to come before council is 2410-2020 is to authorize this Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Fashion Initiative for the provision of business development services, and to authorize a transfer of appropriations in expenditure of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars within the CARES Act Fund and to declare an emergency. The Columbus Fashion Initiative was established to address the changing landscape in fashion and retail, retail, while creating greater opportunities for Columbus residents to participate in the industry. COVID- nineteen has resulted in significant cutbacks, layoffs, and other employment impacts for professionals in the fashion and retail industries. Many Columbus fashion retailers have had to permanently lay off thousands of employees. This has left many professionals in the fashion and retail industry unemployed. This difficult time offers a unique opportunity for fashion entrepreneurs to connect with like-minded designers and start new businesses outside of our large fashion institutions here in Columbus. Through this new opportunity, the Columbus Fashion Initiative will provide small businesses development services, including work-based collaboration, training, and career entrepreneurial offerings to folks who are interested in the fashion industry in Columbus. I want to give a special shout-out to my colleagues, Councilmember Mitch Brown and Councilmember Faber, for contributing to this effort. Would either of my colleagues like to add anything? Thank you. Not thank you, well, thank you for the resources. Thank you for not adding something. I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. That is all to come before council. I want to just make a reminder that there will be no council meeting next week, November second, two thousand and twenty. The next regular council meeting will be on November ninth, two thousand and twenty. With no further business, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. We have a couple speakers to come before council. The first speaker to come before council is Kathy McGlone. Ms. Angie.